If anybody should speak during public comment, you need to sign up. There's a sign up sheet in the front. Once the meeting begins, the sign up sheet is brought up, so you won't have the opportunity to speak.
Terry, can you hear me?
Hi, Scott. Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Am I supposed to be able to hear the room right now? Because I don't hear anything in the room.
They're working on it. It's muted. Let me request the unmute.
Okay.
Should be, I think it auto unmutes in 30 seconds.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just on the phone with John, and I wasn't ignoring you last week, by the way. I didn't have my headset on when you were asking a question about the audio, but there was definitely something going on there.
Do you need me to speak?
Hey, I still don't see anything from the room yet. Oh, there we go. Yeah.
Okay. Terry, you can hear me?
Yeah, it looks like we're all connected through. Mr. Robinson is on via Zoom, as is Virginia. So I think we're all good to go.
All right. Going to call this meeting to--
Ted.
Yes.
Can you hear me, Ted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, we're going to call to order the Borough of Morrisville Borough Council meeting for Monday, August 16th. Can we all rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Rivella. Councilman Dowers.
Here.
Councilwoman Halaal.
Here.
Councilman Nickel. Councilman Parker.
Here.
Councilman Paul.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Sherlock.
Here.
And Councilman Jaeger.
Here.
Our borough coordinator is here.
Yes, Scott Holder and all the Huff Associates.
Do you need me to introduce yourself?
Hello, everyone. My name is Judith Danko. I'm your new Borough Manager for Morrisville Borough. Welcome, everyone. It's very nice to meet everyone. I began the week on Monday, Monday morning, and it's been a phenomenal week so far. We're having some technical difficulties, so if there is anyone who has tried to reach me via telephone or computer, please be patient until we can get that working properly, and we'll be up and running very shortly. But again, it was very nice meeting everyone that I've met so far, and I look forward to meeting everyone. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to announcements and presentations. We have a couple of them this evening. So 4A is Huff Associates' recycling performance grant data submission.
Good evening, members. New Borough Manager, Ms. Danko, terrific. Congratulations--
Thank you.
--for your work well together. Back in, I guess, 2018, Scott Mitchell was the manager. He took a measured risk in asking Huff Associates to work with the Borough. We had a Borough Special Program on for three boroughs, Langhorne, Morrisville, and Norbith, Montgomery County. Limited cost and just to see, learn what we could do for them and show what it possibly could perform. And we've worked well with you over the last few years, and you'll see on the third page of this handout that we've made great strides from that first year where we brought back 11,600 roughly to the next year, 17,800 in '19, which we just filed last year, just received $31,900. With the data that we have already collected for 2020, it's over $35,000. You know, that is pre-audit by the DEP, and it's also--
I don't know where John went. I don't think the mic is working. I thought he stepped out to maybe get one.
Can you just move into the mic and speak-- speak into the mic a little bit closer?
Okay. Is that better?
A little bit.
A little bit better? Okay. Anyway, I took the liberty of producing a package for this evening. Most of it was sent out to you before, but it describes Huff Associates' services and our background. We've just added Chuck Rodmush. I think many of you or some of you may know Chuck from his work at Waste Management as a municipal representative.
It's on.
I just had to be closer. Okay. Chuck has 35 years with Waste Management, and he's retired and joined us to reinforce our staff, provide services to municipalities. And the second page, it shows that we've been involved in this business since Act 101 was put together, and we helped municipalities that became mandated to set up the recycling programs. And then we focused primarily on the grants programs, and we now have over 65 municipalities that are clients, mostly in Bucks, Montgomery, and the Collard Counties, but also in Lehigh and Northampton Counties, and one client in Allegheny County. We put together groups of municipalities to maximize their grants, which reduces their costs, increases their sustainability. And you'll see that the closest group around Morrisville is the Ben Salem Group, which includes Bristol Borough and Yardley Borough. So we do have, I think, about 25 boroughs that are in our client list. I think the largest is Norristown. Pottstown are the biggest ones we have. We, the next page shows the process that we use during the year for getting the grant data, how we get it, how we handle it. We actually spend a lot of time chasing data to make sure that it's valid. And if one year is really out of line, we'll chase that hole and find out why. You've said, what have you done? Sold all your trucks? Where did all this tonnage go? And they'll, they'll look at it again and sometimes make corrections, which will work to your benefit. Our main things for you in terms of deliverables are two. We do the county survey, which comes in February. That's usually for the municipal staff, the most difficult, fastest, shortest timeframe in terms of putting in data to somebody. And then we file the performance grant, which is usually at the end of the year, October. Now, now it's moved to the end of the year. In between, we get out of mailing at no cost to you to the business community, which puts you in compliance with the educational requirement that DEP has. It's a little card. It just comes out and says that state law requires that businesses and institutions require recycling for items. So that's, that's the pitch. And on the next page is our performance for Morrisville. And the following page is our current contract for preparing the 2020 grant application. And the last page is why I'm here tonight. We hope that you would approve the contract for Huff Associates to collect the 2021 data when 2021 ends next year and file your grant. So any questions or comments?
Mr. Huff, I have a question slash comment. Just for clarification, previously, we were paying $3,000 a year for the last couple of years since you started here, where we were receiving $11,000 a year. And you're now looking to increase that to $4,500 a year, and we're going to receive upwards of $35,000.
That's correct. Yeah, the, actually, we look, we look backward, you know, the, in terms of our fees. And so the 3,000 was based on the 17, you know, the 11,000, 17,000. When it doubled this past year, we've raised the fee 50% and puts it in line with other municipalities that are earning $30,000.
Okay. Thank you. To me, that's a very fair return on investment.
If I could. So a couple, a couple of things. One, you mentioned, and I recall this back from 2018, but I just want to kind of bring it up for the public and for those on council that weren't there at the time. So you're kind of, you've kind of created a group of municipalities that are all getting the benefit of the return that we're, that we're, that we're finding. As an individual municipality, we wouldn't have that kind of coalition, correct?
Right. We will start to look now that we have a little data on how Morrisville performs. We'll see how it would fit within, say, that Ben Salem Group.
Okay. Because that was going to be--
We don't do it unless it benefits everybody in that group. And similarly, it has to benefit you.
And that was going to be my, my follow up question was, are you soliciting any other local municipalities to join with us?
No.
Okay.
Not at this, at this time, we are talking to a couple of other boroughs, but not in this area.
Okay. But those boroughs outside of our area would still be part of this coalition?
Well, I'm not saying you're in, you're not in the coalition. You're being handled as an individual municipality.
Okay, so right now, we're not getting the benefit of any other municipalities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, that's, that's--
You're not contributing to any other municipality--
Thank you.
--either. Yeah. But we'll look at it based on the numbers that we have when we're going to file this fall. There are some steps that are involved. The school system will know that there, you have to be part of an IMA, and all the members of that Ben Salem IMA for recycling purposes, you know, we'd have to have you join. You would have to have, you know, do a, I guess, an ordinance change or however you do, however you join at IMA.
Okay. Thank you.
What is an IMA?
Intermunicipal agreement.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Currently, we would, the Ben Salem Group that you have listed here consists of seven, and we're not in that group yet, but that's the one we'll be attached to?
It would make the most sense from our standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to move on to 4B. John Pinkerton of Keystone Collections Group.
Good evening, members of council. I'm actually Joe Lazzaro. I'm not John Pinkerton. It was a switch earlier. But I'm Vice President and General Counsel with Keystone, and hopefully pretty well prepared to answer your questions you might have tonight. Keystone, right now, represents, in this region, suburban Philadelphia, Delaware County, all the communities, boroughs, township, city, school districts in Delaware County, all in Bucks County, all in Northampton County. I mentioned Chester. And yeah, that's, I think, everything except Montgomery County, all suburban Philadelphia, except Montgomery County. We're doing the tax administration right now under Act 32. Act 32 consolidated tax collection by county border. It's administered that way, but if every resident of these community that enacts the tax, the funds go to that community. And a lot of communities right now, those that did not have the earned income tax prior to Act 32, when, when everything consolidated began, it runs technologically and all automation, and the taxes just, the same rate tremendously increased by, by community as far as the revenue return. Reason they're looking at it now really twofold. One, they're finding out that most of the residents in their community, if they didn't have the tax, are paying the tax right now somewhere else, and it's being collected as a non-res tax in the workplace, the employment place. Would not create a new tax. It would actually just take that tax and return it to the home community. The way the act is set up, primary, the tax goes to the community where the individual resides. And if the tax is not imposed there, then it stays in the community where the individual works. It's a workplace versus resident tax. We can see the numbers of Morrisville residents who are in Delaware County, in Chester County, maybe as far as Northampton County. The vast majority would be in Montgomery County, where we don't have access to that data. We don't have that administration. So if they're not in Bucks County, they're likely there. They said it was a twofold reason. The other is, a lot of communities this close to Philadelphia never enacted the tax in the early days because of the Sterling Act. Sterling Act gives priority over all these kinds of taxes to the city of Philadelphia. If you live in Philly, Philly takes the tax. If you work in Philly, Philly takes the tax. And they don't have a cap of 1%, like a community here. They can adjust their tax, and right now, it approaches 4%. What happened under the last year, under the pandemic and the work at home setups that a lot of businesses have quickly gone into because they didn't want people to gather, social distancing, and there's the ability to work remotely in so many positions now. People are working from home, and it's really increasing the Bucks County communities' taxes because they no longer pay a commuter tax to Philly. It dropped from their 4% down to 1%. So taxpayers happier, and the community's receiving those, those assets. The business has to stay in that mode and keep their people remote. We don't know right now how many businesses are going to call everybody back when this thing is really finally over, or they're going to say, hey, this worked out great having remote operations. We don't have to pay a lease down here. We can have less space. We don't have to have equipment. You don't have to have parking. And if we're getting the same kind of hours or better. If that's their situation, they may let them stay in their home communities working. And we're just honestly monitoring that very closely. And I'm talking quarter to quarter. We're looking at that month to month to see what businesses are attempting to do. And throughout the whole pandemic, for all of our communities, we tracked where people were, where they were working, and what jobs were staying in place, and what jobs were disappearing or being lost because of layoffs and the business failures in the pandemic. Surprisingly, earned income tax in every county we represent across the state, and we handle 18, everyone went up in 2020 over 2019, which to that point had been by far the biggest year in earned income tax, simply because during '19, incomes were up across the board, and the ability to, to collect on that and the return on that was phenomenal. During the pandemic, a lot of businesses went to the Payroll Protection Plan, federal program, under the relief programs of, for the pandemic. And the Payroll Protection Plan required businesses to keep their employees on, keep them at like or near salaries to where they were. And if they did that, from the Small Business Administration, they could have that entire loan forgiven, which was a tremendous switch from handing out unemployment checks to, to keeping people employed. What it also did for the communities was it kept these people on the earned income tax. They kept their cash flow going in, and it was, it was really a phenomenal end result in, in, what they call a win-win. Again, I am not here by any means. You make the administrative decisions, the, the, adopt the tax or not as you see fit. But for us, the tax is being collected as a non-res or resident tax. You, you make the judgment calls as to what's the best thing to do here. I'm here to just answer questions, how the tax works, how the administration works, and anything I can offer you in the Act 32 legal realm. So I just wanted to be here as a, as a service to you for that reason tonight. Yes, sir.
How does this tax affect people who work in New Jersey and your ability to collect it?
New Jersey's actually been fantastic with this. They have reciprocity with Pennsylvania. There's an agreement that says, if your resident comes into New Jersey, we won't tax them in Jersey. As long as our residents go to Pennsylvania, you won't tax them in Pennsylvania. It's a deal. It was an agreement that was made a long time ago. They could be working in Morrisville as far as you're concerned, but they're working in New Jersey. And the employers in New Jersey have been phenomenal with us. They withhold the tax, even though they don't have to under New Jersey law, and treat it just like it was a New Jersey tax, electronically file it with us every quarter, some of them monthly. And we have them set up on our business portal just as quickly as any business located in Bucks County or Chester County, New Jersey, employers are paying the tax. If they don't, we do find out, but later. If they don't report it, then they are not withheld. We do find out later because the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue eventually will release PA 40 earned income tax numbers to us. That's a requirement under the act. We analyze every taxpayer in Pennsylvania, so every resident in Morrisville. What you report on your PA 40, what you report on your local earned income tax return. If there's a discrepancy, there's an inquiry later that goes out, and that starts the process to get them onto your tax rolls. So New Jersey would have no impact other than you're going to collect the taxes this year.
Okay. My next question would be, and probably one you can't answer because you don't track, but if a borough doesn't have an EIT and during this pandemic, do you see any change, you know, the opposite direction where now they're working at home and they're not paying an EIT? Trying to, I'm not, I know I'm not phrasing it correctly. And I can't think of a good way to put it, but it is essentially the reverse of what you said. You said during the pandemic that the places with EITs were now bringing them back, bringing the money back home because people were working from home. But is there any--
What we're seeing where there is no earned income tax in acting is they're considering it. I've been to more places than ever before since Act 32 passed in 2010 because people want, communities are looking to say, everybody else has this one way. And they want to get in because their funds are going somewhere else. Their residents are paying somewhere. It's withheld, whether they know it or not. That tax is withheld.
If I may, I would have to argue that and say we have, we have people that work in this borough, that live in this borough and work in this borough, people that, that work at the bars, the restaurants, the convenience stores, that work and live in this town. So it's not just a handful of people. You're talking about a good percentage of this town that works and lives right here. So I would argue that it's not all going, but I appreciate the sentiment.
Sir, you're absolutely correct. And I, and I'll, I'll take that one back. Most is what we see, not everyone.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
We, we received something from, from Keystone. I guess it was a, an estimate back in November 2020 saying how much is already going outside the borough, and it's $170,000. How close to, to that number do you, or is that true? How true is that number? You don't know?
I'm not familiar with that number at all. I know there's a real difficult situation here because historically, we couldn't see how many residents here work in Philly. And as we see, that's starting to shift. We're starting to shift. It's shifting pretty, pretty rapidly, pretty dynamically. And we don't know and can't see how many people work in Montgomery County. We wouldn't know anybody working in New Jersey because we've not been able to notify them of, of your information, and we don't know about Delaware. That being the case, the most we can see, you can't, you can't analyze that. We don't have, is, is a fraction of the data. So we don't know that. We can only see what the residents of Morrisville reported on their PA returns. So we can see the total revenue. How much would be drawn away by Philadelphia? We don't know. We can't see that. And other than that, I mean, there's, that's pretty much it. Philadelphia, whatever went to Philadelphia is, is the real variable.
Well, this was at 1%, by the way, this $170,000. So I think when we spoke about it, we were only going to do a half a percent. So, but that still is 1 mil. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
I have, I have a question. So there are residents in this borough right now that are working places that aren't paying the EIT. And for those residents, this would be a straight up tax increase, correct?
Sure, yes.
Okay. Because the way I'm looking at it, let's say it was at 1%, okay? For me personally, I don't pay an earned income tax where, where, you know, where I work, okay? If we did a 1% income tax rate now, okay, that would be a $1,580 increase in my taxes. I would be paying $1,580 on top. If you went around and raised everyone's taxes $1,580, okay, they would, we, we would be getting hung or crucified down at the Getty. So I'm going to say right now, I am against this. And anybody else on this council that wants to vote for this, you know, would you be comfortable writing me a check for $1,580 to cover the cost of this? I, I pay enough in taxes, and I have emails from residents. I got a lengthy email today from a resident. Ted, you also received a copy of it. I, I can't read it right now. I'm driving, and it would take a while to read it. But you saw that email today, Ted. There, there are people that are against this. I know it sounds good, but there are, there are the people in this town that are working that aren't paying an EIT. And if you did 1%, that's, that's, you know, that's almost $1,600 I would be paying at a 1% over the year. Anybody in that room right now that can look and say, yeah, I think that's right. You need to pay another $1,600. And you believe what you want. I think it's crazy. That's, that's all I have to say on this.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question regarding the tactic self. And, and did you possibly see if municipalities had enacted this tax, did they then open the availability to possibly reduce their property taxes? With the thought process of taxing people who are working and reducing the property tax for that type of, you know, being able to bring that type of income then into the, into the municipality? Did you, have you seen anything of that nature in any of the municipalities that you work for?
Two things that are very similar to that. The first one would be, they're considering increasing the real estate tax because the budget requires it. They have to, costs are going-- They have to, costs are going up, and they decide not to increase the real estate tax and bring this tax in. And that's the alternative. And the idea behind it is this tax doesn't affect seniors, it doesn't affect fixed income in anybody matter. This is a withheld tax, it's a payroll tax. You have to earn the funds. It's not funds you have, or it's not funds you're investing. Only the earned income you're paying during that course of the year is taxed. Anything else that you that you bring in is not taxed under this Act. And two, school districts by law have to do what you're suggesting if they enact a tax. And that's also happening in suburban Philadelphia because of the work at home situation. They're enacting or looking to enact this tax. They've got to go through a voter referendum, and they've got to lower the real estate tax to proportionately, and that has to be demonstrated ahead of time to enact the earned income tax. So there is a shift there. And that's what a lot of a lot of, you know, communities are and can do as far as what specifics they've done. I don't see the real estate tax side, and I can't be at every supervisors and council meeting. So I don't know whether they've affected their real estate tax, when they've enacted a new earned income tax. They may. There may be a lot of examples like that. I know schools would have to do it, and school boards would have to do it. And I know that I see oftentimes, they don't want to raise the real estate tax anymore, and they have to make up the difference by enacting.
Thank you very much for that information. I too have seen that in some municipalities. It was more a leveraging type item that was utilized to be able to reduce the the property tax and follow through with something of this nature, as you have mentioned. And it actually did help certain people. So I just wanted to, you know, hear some of that information. But thank you very much.
If I could, Mr. President?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So when I'm sitting up here and there's an issue in front of me, I'm never thinking me, right? So I represent a lot of people. And some of the people I represent work a giant, and they don't make a whole lot of money. And they live here. They don't make a whole lot of money. We're not talking about people making, you know, $200,000 a year. We're talking about families that are already struggling. We're and and we talked about this years ago. And I love the idea that it doesn't affect seniors that are retired. That's a fantastic thing. But it affects families that are absolutely struggling right now. And that's when I sit up here and I have to make a decision and as to what's best for the town, I have to consider those people, not myself. This wouldn't affect me personally. But it affects those people. So for that for that reason, I think it's it's more than just looking at it and saying, okay, well, we can offset everyone's taxes. And I appreciate your thought on that. I'm not, don't take this the wrong way. But what we're doing is we're we're pushing that on the working folks that aren't all well-to-do, that aren't all in good situations. We're taking the a bigger part of the burden and putting it on people that already can't afford it. So I I really have an issue doing that because of that reason, no other reasons. Thanks.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't believe we're voting on this 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 evening. So it's good to hear everybody's thoughts. But to Mike's point, I I agree there are people that will struggle. But if this isn't, if this is not enacted, then the borough is going to have to raise taxes. So just a comment. Sir, just to also let you know that 24% of the taxes that you pay to the borough are for the borough and this and the county. The other 76% are school taxes, and we don't control them.
Anyone else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we're going to move on to 4C Gilmore and Associates.
Good evening. My name is Wade Helder with Gilmore Associates. Good to see you all tonight. I have my. Good evening. My name's Wade Helder with Gilmore Associates. We were asked to come into council tonight to possibly answer a few questions about ongoing projects and grant ongoing grants as well. So we're here to answer any questions we may have on that matter.
If that's the case, I'll start. Can you give us an update on the levy project?
All right, levy project. So we just submitted the driver, what we call it, the preliminary certification report to FEMA so they can give us their review and feedback on what we might need to update. So that's that's going on. It's probably going to take them a few months to get back on that. We'll have to, in order to reach final certification for the levy, multiple, multiple improvements will need to be made. So there's going to be a diversion structure that needs to be installed north of the Delmore Avenue Bridge. There's the waste gate near East Maple Avenue. Will have to be either certified, structurally certified to, you know, not fail during a 100-year flood event, or it'll have to be closed off. Part of FEMA's requirements and also need operations and maintenance plan to go along with it. And then a flat gate needs to be installed in a head wall, in a stormwater outlet. So a head wall south of East Bridge Street. You guys, there's a, there's like a there's a swamp area south of East Bridge Street, north of Delmore Avenue that has a stormwater structure.
So you said south of Delmore, but north of?
I believe it's Delmore Avenue. I believe it's it's.
It's behind the Franklin property.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, where the tunnels go under the roadway.
Whenever you're done, Justin.
My only other comment is that can can we provide counsel with like a high level, you know, sort of milestone list of, you know, what's what are the key things that have been done, what's to be done? And, you know, your best guess on time estimate?
Absolutely, sure.
Can we see your application?
I believe we can provide that.
What what application are you talking about?
The the preliminary levy certification application that was submitted.
Okay. Mr. Parker, if Justin's done. To Justin's point, I think we've all been interested in what's going on down for the flood control, for the flood levy. Now, this month, there was $14,800 spent. And I'm just wondering, each month, there's money spent. And what is so what you just explained, is that what's being?
Yes, yes, essentially. So we have a subconsultant, Terra Solutions. They've been the ones performing the hydrologic and hydraulic study that goes along with this levy certification. They've also been the ones to help us prepare the report and submit it. There's also work involved with coordinating with D C N R to try and get answers from them, as well as FEMA. We've been coordinating with FEMA to see exactly what their requirements are going to be to to get this levy certified.
Okay, thank you, because it just comes to us as one.
Yeah.
As a doesn't really say what's what's happening. Also, I have a second question about in in the McGrath McGrath project, the $1,800, like what exactly is Gilmore doing down at the from the McGrath project?
So I know at one point, there was, and this probably isn't last month, I know at one point, there was a traffic study that we were reviewing at one point. Last last month or the month prior to that, McGrath had reached out to us about our survey for the with the levy study because they wanted to see, we wanted to coordinate our, because they have their storm survey, and we have our storm survey. So we're trying to consolidate those to have as much accurate information as possible.
Is that the traffic study that was done last September? Do you know? Because there was a bill for one, but I didn't remember voting on it. And when I had asked asked about it, don't really know. I mean, we paid for it.
Right, I don't remember when the traffic study was performed, but I remember we did perform a review several months ago.
Okay. And Patriots Park is my next question.
Sure.
It seems minimal, it's $3,700, but I was just wondering what's going on there.
So Patriots Park, we have most of, we have the concept design done. We have survey. We don't have a detailed plan for Patriots Park because there's a lack of design funding available currently. We have, we have been submitting grant applications to get more funding to for design purposes and construction purposes. There's an R A C P grant that is awarded. However, a business, an applet, and a business and action plan needs to be submitted to R A C P, an official plan that highlights where the the match funding for that grant be coming from. And you can match it with real estate value and land value and, you know, as well as what construction will be done with the park. The only issue there is, again, we don't have design or engineering funding to submit that application currently. So we're, you know, we have been looking into ways to have that have that done for you.
Okay. So to in order to do the recap application, when you're going to ask for money and for matching monies, we don't even have the match yet. So it's not, the architectural design is not happening. Is that until we have some?
Yeah, until we have design funding, yeah, we can't.
Okay.
We can't continue design work.
Thank you.
All right, I have one question. Nine nine I, which is a paving project with Falls Township. Can you explain that to council a little bit?
Sure. So Falls Township, so we found out, or I believe John later reached out to us about the Falls Township paving. They are paving north Lafayette Avenue between Philadelphia Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue, I believe.
West Trenton.
West Trenton Avenue, okay, yes, West Trenton Avenue. So that's their half of their road. So, you know, Morrisville just has the opportunity here to kind of jump onto that paving project and, you know, have the other half paved. So we have a full new road. So I did, we did look into their unit pricing for their road program, and it turned and it comes out to be less than the current Morrisville 2021 road program. So we can provide cost to them, and they'll, you know, handle oversight and engineering and construction.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks for bringing that up because I was going to ask that. You know, I appreciate the opportunity that we could do that other half of the road, but I am completely opposed to this for the fact that we already have a road program that we planned on doing in more dire needed streets, streets. And I think that they should be addressed first.
Okay. This is in addition to the current road program. This might be replacing any of the current roads proposed to be paved this year.
So this was an opportunity. One second, Scott. So this was this was an opportunity to pave a section of roadway at less than what it would cost us if we hadn't initiated our sale already there. Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Okay, I have a question. A couple of years ago, Plaza Boulevard got paved from the the portion between the shopping centers from Trenton Avenue down. I don't know how far they went down to the apartments. Did did we pay for that whole project? Do you know or not?
Yes.
Okay.
That was with Falls.
So they so they so they chipped in on that project, then?
No, Falls would not chip in on the project, and we did not want to leave it, leave a half a football field's length of road not done. And the amount to do it was a reasonable amount because the equipment and personnel were already there to do it. So the Borough Council decided to pay for the remainder because Falls wouldn't come to the table. But I believe this is L M T we're dealing with now.
Which one, this project?
Yes, this is Laura Make.
This is Falls.
Like, my question was, I remember as a child that Plaza Boulevard was always that it was like a minefield because the Marzal Barrow and Falls Township could never, you could never, you know, mutually agree to get it done. And then maybe 20 years ago, it was paved. And I believe it was a joint venture between both townships. So, I mean, I I guess what I'm saying is maybe we could ask them to do it out of the goodness of their heart. But since we finished Plaza Boulevard, wouldn't they be able to do a little of that work on left yet for us?
That was Falls that we did that for, and this is Laura Makefield.
No, this is Falls Township.
Oh, this is Falls as well? Okay, I thought it was Laura Make. Okay, my mistake.
I think we should ask if they'd be willing. I still I still believe if we have an extra $14,000, it should go to another another road that's used by us on the, you know, there are roads here that are used.
But I think the point was, was that we're getting this $14,000, we're getting something that would cost us what would be the estimate?
Typical estimate would be between like 18 and 25.
And that's without your engineering services and to bid it out, right?
The higher estimate would include the engineering.
Okay.
So I'm still staying where I stand.
And how how far down Lafayette is this going? From from Trenton Avenue to?
From West Trenton to Pepitone Avenue.
Yes.
It's only half the street, it's the north side of.
To Pennsylvania Avenue?
Yes, it kind of goes up and curves over by the church.
It comes out that way for the church. It's north of Trenton Avenue, not south. Oh, okay.
If there are no other questions, Council President, may I speak on this? Well, this was presented to me, it was presented in the manner as as we had heard, that it would save us a lot of money to be able to accomplish this. So I then asked John later, would we be eliminating anything that's on our road plan? Because I too had the same thought process as as one of our other council members who had just spoken. And forgive me, I'm.
Nancy Sherlock.
Ms. Sherlock, thank you.
That's okay. We just met this evening.
Yes, I'm horrible with names. Didn't want not want to be disrespectful in any way. So I was with the understanding that we would be possibly saving a lot of money because we would not have to put this out to bid at this point. We wouldn't, we didn't have to do the engineering and so forth. And my first question was, do we have the money in Liquid Fuels to accomplish this? I was told we do. I was also told that we would not be eliminating any of the other projects, which we do have in place for the road program that's in place, excuse me, for the roads that are in need of of repair. I then had asked the engineer to please reach out to Pico and get the contract that you have before you this evening in writing because I knew there were monies due to us regarding Pico. So we will be acquiring these funds also. So I thought, well, if council is not amenable to taking the money from Liquid Fuels, we also have this to work with, which we could accomplish this. So really, the goal was because we were looking at saving monies, hated to see half of the road finished and not the other half. I believe, did someone, and forgive me, Wade, did someone reach out to Falls Township and ask them if they would would follow through with the other half of the road for us?
I've been in touch with their township engineer, Joe Jones, who indicated that, yeah, that's the case, that they would follow through with road paving.
I'm sorry.
The road paving, the road paving on the Lafayette, yes.
That they, did anyone reach out to them asking if they would pave both sides?
Oh, pave, yeah. You you mean under their current road paving program?
Correct.
Yes. Yes, if Morrisville was to contribute the funds.
Certainly, but what I'm asking, did anyone reach out and ask them if if they would help with this? Because some of the council members are saying that they have.
Yeah, not to help out with it. They never indicated anything like that to us.
Sure.
I think we should put a little more pressure on Falls.
We can look into it. I had not heard about the, I believe you said it was Plaza Boulevard paving. I had not heard about that.
And then the other item was, the only reason we quickly did this was because I believe the paving project is supposed to start next week. So that was why we did what we did, putting it on the agenda with the thought process of what we had. So just just a little background.
Just a further comment on that. The email we have provided by Falls Township Engineer is their conservative estimate is it's going to be $13,500 to $15,000. So it's a good chunk of change, but it's not a huge chunk of change. And also, I know you pulled out the Pico letter with what they owe us. We did, I believe, pull out a section of Hillcrest Avenue from the road program because there was going to be some, it was the work that was done by Pico there.
It was not removed out of the road program since we had already bid that portion of road, and then Pico came in to do do their utility work.
I believe, didn't we deduct it? Didn't we approve the deduct of that first block?
It was a different, the first block is not what Pico is working on. That is because there's a cracked pipe running underneath the road that needs to be repaired first.
So it starts at the 200 block north, I mean, at west on Hillcrest? That's where they did all the piping.
Starts after.
Right around Somerset.
Stockham.
Right, so it started, yeah, it starts, yeah, yeah, Stockham, you're correct.
Stockham and Hillcrest?
Yes. So we're paving from Stockham towards Legion, I think, all the way to Lafayette on Hillcrest.
Yeah, you're paving, I believe.
And then further down on Hillcrest.
I believe you go all the way down to Grandview. I believe you go all the way down to Grandview.
Oh, okay, so you're just, you're.
So we literally.
So where's that pipe? It's from Pennsylvania Avenue up to Stockholm is where the pipe issue is? Okay. That's kind of funky there. Thank you for bringing up the $25,000, that was a question I had later, but I thought that we should, you know, of course, we're going to use that, I was hoping we're going to use it just to give us a bigger cushion. I just, I think we should talk to Falls and talk about our history and see what they can do. That's my suggestion, I can't tell you what to do, I can't, the Borough would have to tell you what to do, this body, that's my feelings.
If I may?
Go ahead, sir.
So I just want to circle back, and I have two items. One is, I'm going to circle back to the levy and ask if there's, and obviously, this is going to be a put-you-on-the-spot question, a guesstimate on this thing being done, and here's why I'm asking. Every resident that lives down there is paying for that flood insurance. Every individual down that way is asking on a regular basis, and rightfully so, when are we going to see some relief from this flood insurance that they probably shouldn't have to be paying?
Well, in order to get full accreditation, you'll need to construct the improvements I had discussed earlier. So obviously, either the Borough will need to secure the construction funds through grants, which we'll have to look into, so just getting those grants is going to take, you know, it's at least a six-month process from when you submit the application, and then after that, it's probably another at least six months to a year in order to implement the improvements. So you're probably looking at least a year and a half for.
So conservatively, two years we're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay. And the other question is one of my favorite topics, it's going to be the basin on Melvin Avenue, do we have a groundbreaking date yet?
We have to submit the, or we have to coordinate with the contractor to set up a pre-con meeting to figure out exactly when to get out there, but they should be out there within the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
One more quick question, do you have any update on the Bridge Street obstruction project?
That's the one project that I'm not intimately familiar with in Mooresville Borough, that would be my coworker, I can certainly try to get you guys like a detailed update on what's going on with that. I know we need to go through an environmental review process, I believe, it's just that we lack the funding to do that currently, but we do have construction funds secured for this project. So until we can get funding secured to get this environmental review done, then it's all essentially.
Okay, but we, it's not really a Borough project, right? It's the, I forget what the organization's name is, it's kind of.
Environmental Council.
Yeah, the P E C is heading it up and just kind of going through us, so I assume that in addition to you, they're looking for funds?
I believe they are, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
I may, Council President, please.
If I may, I was going to hold this information for manager's report, but since we have waited the podium, felt it was best to discuss it now. This past week, we had worked diligently as a group, myself, Micah, John, and Wade, we worked with the county and the C D B G funds that were awarded previously to the Borough for the library roof. The bids came in for the library roof, they were double than what they had been previously, and the amount of funds that we previously had were not enough to accomplish this project. So all of us put our heads together and worked with the county. The county is now going to award us the majority of funds, and we are also utilizing the Keystone Grant, which is in the amount of $52,500 to match that. So at this time, this project should be able to be completed without any taxpayer dollars. We're very happy with what had transpired this week. Took about three days to come up to being able to accomplish all of this, and I didn't know, Wade, if you had anything that you wanted to add to that?
I think that pretty much sums it up. We do, C D B G has sent us an amended contract, so it just needs to be enacted, but we do have the funds to complete construction at this point.
Very nice, thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. One quick question, and Wade, for the public's knowledge, can you tell us about the project? Is it going to be a replacement of the roof in kind, and is everything going to look exactly the same, or is there changes?
As of now, we'll have enough to award the base bid, so it would be a slate roof, similar color, similar material, with copper flashings and copper gutters.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker? The bid mentioned two exemptions, we're taking out, was it, I thought this was for later, so, do you know what I'm referring to?
Are you talking about the deducts?
Yes.
So there's two deducts available, if the Borough would like to award the synthetic slate, there's a deduct there, I'm not sure what the price off the top of my head is, and then there's also a deduct for the copper flashings and gutters to do aluminum instead.
Okay, and which slate was, John later had a sample of one, and which one was that, do you know? Or is he in there to tell us? Was that slate-like, but yet was 25-year warranty?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, I know the architect, we had worked on this coordinated, that was John later, I don't believe I ever saw the actual product.
Okay.
It's slate, it's not slate-like, it's slate.
It's slate.
Yeah, it's slate, and the color is a little bit darker, but that's because it fades over a period of time, so, but it's a 75-year warranty on that, and synthetic would be 50.
Okay, so it makes, right, it's much more sense to get the one that has the longer warranty, thank you.
We will have to go through approvals in regards to what the shipo will approve, that would be the historical type materials, so there'll be process that we'll have to go through, and that's why we have the information on the agenda as we do, because it's unknown at this time as to what the shipo will approve and not approve, so what we're doing is we're covering our bases, is that correct, Wade?
Yes.
If I can also add to that, the Library Board is currently working to have the building dedicated as a national historic property, so they're going through some other information to see how far we can get with that. We have Mr. Jeffrey Marshall, who worked for the county for many years, you're probably familiar with, so he's working with the board on that. Thank you.
And the only other information I wanted to touch upon was we will have to relocate the library employees for a minimal period of time when the construction is going on, so I just wanted to inform everyone that that'll be a process we'll be also following through on, so everyone is safe and we can accomplish this as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Will the library be closed?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on, Republic Services?
Oh, thank you. Oh, okay.
Do you have anything to say, or you just want to accept questions?
Just want to say, good evening, council, residents, my name's Chris Moore, I'm representing Republic Services.
I'm sorry, closer to the mic again, I think they have to eat the mic.
Yeah, he can do it.
Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
Solving problems. Ms. Danko, congratulations, haven't met you yet, but I've worked with your team down there, I've worked with John later and Micah Heitz, had nothing but good experiences with them, so here to answer questions for you guys, whatever you got for me.
Thank you for the congratulations, and I just wanted to add, a representative was in this morning from your company, and I had a conversation with him, and I apologize, I don't recall his name, can you help me with his name, Penny?
I believe that was our municipal sales guy.
I'm not sure what his name was, but, okay.
Draw a blank right now.
So we're both in the same boat, but thank you. But we had informed him, you know, of all the infractions that have been taking place throughout the Borough, and that this isn't really a new issue, it's been a long time. I'm only five days new, but I certainly have learned a lot in five days as to the items that have been taking place, or should I say not taking place, in reference to pickup and so forth. So we in the office, along with the person who we spoke to, the girls who have his name and number, had agreed that we would be working with him and you and anyone else that we could work with to get rectification of all of these items. We do have some lists, we have a lot of information, so I'm encouraging anyone that is experiencing any of these issues to please, I would encourage you to call, of course, you know, the Republic Services hotline first, if you can't get through, then of course, utilize the Borough's online informational item, that would be really advantageous, and if not, certainly call the Borough Office, and we are going to input that information ourselves, so we have documentation that we can all work together to get this rectified, as I was saying. But I know council has a lot to say about this, so I'll pass this along, but I did just want to inform everyone that we've begun working on a process on how to get this rectified, and we're looking forward to working with Republic and making sure that it happens, but thank you.
Okay, one at a time now.
Okay.
If you don't mind?
Who's first?
Thank you. So I was going to first look at you and say, so how do you think it's going, but I'm not going to do that to you. Here's what I'm going to say, I know the answer that I've gotten with the outages and the misses is personnel-based, however, that has become the excuse, and here's where I'm going to take that out of the equation. I have an issue that two people in this town can call the same hotline and get two different answers. So my question to you is, what are you doing about that? Because that's the worst kind of service you can offer. If you miss something, hey, listen, I get it, some people call in sick, it's been a rough time in general, C D L drivers are at a minimum right now, right? So I get all of that. What are you doing operationally to say, I'm going to treat our customer base right, which is the community, and provide them accurate information? Know that two people calling the same number and asking the same question aren't going to get two different answers. How are you, what are you doing to fix that problem? Because that's really, in my opinion, your biggest problem. Personnel isn't your biggest problem, how you respond to your misses is your biggest problem right now.
Yeah, 100%, and I agree with you on that. That is a, the portion I would majorly put that on is our customer service representatives, right? So years ago, we used to have in-house customer service, they knew what was going on minute to minute, they could answer anything that anybody needed. About five years ago, the company moved to an area-based customer service located in Arizona, and one I believe is in Virginia. I'm working with our customer service liaison, because this is not just a Mooresville issue. We service over 10,000 customers every single day, it's the number one thing that I hear from residents or customers, is the customer service aspect of it. Whether it's the hold times on how long they're waiting to get ahold of somebody, to the answers that they're given, these are things that I bring up on a monthly call to our field liaison and work with them on trying to solve the issue. I will say, within the next year, we're going to be implementing a tablet program, one that other companies have been using, but we are now going to be using it in residential, which should be able to allow more feedback from the residents. I've been told that it's kind of like an Uber type of deal, where if you're receiving poor service, you'll be able to log on and let that driver specifically know what your issue is and what you're having with that, but that's, we're looking to implement that early next year.
So I'm going to blow you up on that answer, though, because you just blamed it on customer service, you again blamed it on employees, when in fact, if there was proper training and your systems were correct, you wouldn't have this problem, right? Because my understanding is, you know, you have an individual to call and ask a question, right? Your customer service representatives are looking at their computer screen, and they understand, they get details on our contract with Republic, and that's how they are able to answer the questions, how do I do this? If I have a refrigerator I'm trying to get rid of, I call Republic, what's the answer? How much do I get charged? They're the kind of things you guys are struggling with, too, I don't even know if you know that. I had a situation a little while ago at this point, but an individual called you guys and said, hey, I want to pick up my air conditioner, and this was in the prior contract, and they were told that they had to pay $50. Well, when I heard that, I hit the roof, because you guys, that was in our contract, that was literally one of the items listed that you were to pick up as a bulk item. And so, again, the problem isn't necessarily the people answering the phones, it's the information that they have, and if it is the people answering the phones, right, then it's a training issue, right? You can't just keep saying that the problem is our employees. At some point, you got to take responsibility and say, our problem is operational, and this is what we're doing about it. And I hear what you said you're doing about it, you're meeting with the liaisons or the regionals and stuff like that, I get all that, but this has been going on for years, so at what point do you think you'd see some movement and some better service when somebody calls, and at what point do you think you'd feel confident in saying, hey, I believe 100%, if two people call this number right now, you're going to get the same answer from two different people?
That's, you know, that's kind of a tough question to ask, but it's a valid one. You know, I'm working with, like I said, the field liaison people and the salespeople to make sure that all this information is correct. Along with those issues, I've also heard from meeting on Mondays and Thursdays while I'm here, that residents are calling, they're looking to buy containers, and that the people on the phone are saying, well, you're not a customer, things of that nature. So it's an overall larger issue that we're actually having with all of our municipalities, for whatever reason. I'm an operations supervisor, there's only so much I'm going to be able to answer on that, but I will let you know that is a major top concern that we are working on to better service you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Parker, whoever your second person is, I can go. Hi, I have actually two, besides missed homes, which seems to be the biggest, and it's amazing to me that they can miss a house that's, that, like, they'll hit three houses and the next one they miss it, so I don't know, I don't know, you know, you had mentioned that it was personnel, and I also believe, you know, to Mike's point, yeah, customer service is important, but I think consistency is very important, and I don't know that all your drivers are consistent, I don't know if you have different people that come in every week, they don't know the route as well, they miss, and they, so I'm just wondering if there's any hope to get that fixed. And then sometime ago, now you just said you're coming into the Borough on Tuesdays and Thursdays, sometime ago, there used to be the representative would come into the Borough Hall around noon and say, what's happening, have we missed something, was that you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, and, you know, did we miss, did we miss garbage, did we miss recycling? And then you would just immediately take care of it before you left the town. So I'm just wondering, is that, if that's, if you're still coming, then I would think that we'd be able to fix these things before the end of day.
Yeah, so two-part question, first part for our staffing issues, we had lost four members for various different reasons, two of them were directly involved in Mooresville contracts. So the people who we've brought in are either S O S drivers who may be coming from Delaware, may be coming from Pittsburgh, or all over the country that fly in and just basically help staff us, not well-versed, they do their best, they're kind of what we get to work with. The other side of the coin is, I've brought people in who just aren't well-equipped and had to give them, you know, a fair shot at learning a route, and that may take two, three weeks, and then you go, this isn't working, right? You got to pull them out of there, try something else. Where we're at now, like I said, we were four drivers down, I got four back up, and none of them, to your point, you know, C D L drivers had an all-time premium, none of them were through interviews. I had a driver that transferred from another division, I took two of our best helpers, two of them that were actually helpers in here, trained them up, personally took them to get their C D L, they're now driving for us, and also called a previous worker and had them come in. So we are turning that corner into being fully staffed, actually, as of today, we are fully staffed.
Well, there are a number of people in town that have absolutely no problem with your sanitation pickup, and, but unfortunately, we have to worry about the ones that aren't getting the service. So the, and one other question is, I've had some. I've had some comments, people had called about, they said there's a lot of glass in the street. And is there something after they crush that the glass is slipping through?
So you'll see this in any type of recycling pickup. Typically, if you're gonna use an automated side loader, like most do, either that or rear loader. Cross-glass, it's the worst on the trucks. It just grinds a hole straight into the bottom. And trucks that are specifically used for recycling, they take the brunt of it. Whenever we see that, that truck goes straight to our weld shop, gets handled that night, right then and there.
So if people need to call and say, this happened, give the address and then you would know which truck was on that route?
Yeah, absolutely. And when I come in, typically, my routine is I go in, I'll check in on all of our drivers in the area and I'll come in the office, either report on situations that we're having or incur, if there is anything going on that I don't know about, I'll go back out, have the issue solved before I leave. And then after I return back to the office, if there's something that I get called on, our drivers are typically done before 3 o'clock. So if I get something later in the afternoon, I'm gonna have to rely on drivers who are out in different areas for them to come over here to handle an issue. I've been called on in the afternoon about broken glass or maybe hydraulic or something and had to, we have a third-party service who will come out and clean it. We have no problem sending them out here to clean up the streets, which we've done it.
So people have to call about that as well, is what I'm saying. And I think communication is key. So if you're still communicating with the Borough, coming in saying, what can we do? What did we miss? I think that's important. I mean, there was stuff missed on Bridge Street last week. Again, clearly, I don't know how they missed it. And it was there, it was there before pickup. So, thank you.
I have a couple of things. You mentioned you guys are looking to go computerized in the next year. Until that time, how do we get ahold of you? I've had residents say they waited 10, 15, 20 minutes on the phone. I find that completely unacceptable, especially if they have to do it more than once a month. Do you have an email address or anything that we can contact? Is there another system we can put in place whereby, our Borough manager had mentioned, I know we were working on our end to do online reporting for us and then we can just contact you. But is there something in your interim, you know? I realize you don't want your phone number going out to 3,000 people.
It's out there.
But, so is there anything, in your first week of the job here, is our online system up and running to do complaints?
Our online system is up and running. So anyone that, within the Borough can certainly go onto our line, our online system, and make the complaint. And I've had a meeting with the office staff this week on how we're going to begin to handle things in that manner. It's not really how we would like to go about it. We would prefer that Republic provide us with some type of other contact information other than a phone number. So that was actually something we were going to discuss when we met again. Can Republic provide us with an email address? Or can they provide us with some type of a complaint system other than just a phone call? Because the phone call system is not working. So that was an item that I talked about today. So thank you very much. But again, we were going to regroup, re-meet. I hadn't met you at that point. And get a, like I said, a staff meeting together that all of us could figure out ways to not only work with you guys, but to also help expedite some of these complaints so they are dealt with immediately when you're in the Borough and not after the fact. Hoping that that will help better, you know, fast-track all of this. So is there, since we're saying this, is there an email address?
Sure, sure. So I believe the way it works now is either Sue and Dawn, who are handling that, they'll receive phone calls from residents. They'll either refer them to the number or they'll take down the complaint directly. And they'll forward that to either my email address along with my direct dispatcher's email address. I would not be hesitant to put my email out there, but I do handle a lot of email and that would put a lot more on my plate. We do have a dispatch group email that we primarily use for commercial services and industrial services. I could talk to our manager there and see if that's something that we could implement since we did bring on another member. So I don't see why we wouldn't be able to handle it. It's only two days a week.
Certainly, because I believe it's very important that the public has some other way to reach Republic other than this phone number that's not helping them in any way. So if we're able to have a process that, an email address or some other complaint-type of, you know, email system, we would certainly appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Because I agree with all you. Our corporate customer service, and this is me saying this, I don't believe that it's up to par. And if we could kind of sidestep that and give you guys a more clear, open line of communication, I have no problem with providing that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Judy, what about something along the lines, if we were to set up an email address, you know, trashcomplaints@morrisopagov.gov that basically would take emails from residents and, you know, forward them to one inbox where they could, the Borough would keep record of it and then you could, we could forward it on to him so that he's only getting emails from one or two people instead of a town fool. I know, you know, if you get 300 emails, somebody's complaining on their Jefferson Street and you don't know which town that's in. They didn't write the name or phone number and, you know, we would have a better feel for who's writing it in.
I was going to ask Mr. Later to comment on how our email process works because I think, I think what we have in place at this time, we can still, we can utilize and I believe that's what we're doing. Am I correct?
You're correct. The Citizen Reporter, which is on our website, that's where we can do that. We can, the resident can report a missed pickup or another issue. That comes right now, comes to me. And then I can then take it to the STANCO and whomever, and anybody from the Hall or, and we can, we can do it if they use it, but it has to be utilized. Instead of doing a whole email, that's just another step. We have something in place now that we need, we can use.
I get that. I know three weeks ago or so, you said you guys were gonna work on it and update me at least. And I never got an email saying it is up and running and usable.
Absolutely. I mean, the system is up and running. Tracer is up and running right now. Citizen Reporter's been up on the website for at least six months or more. So it is being, and residents are utilizing it. They just utilize it a little bit more.
And can we come up with some sort of, you know, one-page, high-level instructions and, you know, exactly what we need on there? Because people are gonna go on there, they're not gonna put in their address or they're not gonna put, you know, the information that you need to be able to get to Republic that says this person hears their complaint and what it is. Like, can we make those boxes mandatory or something?
It is self-explanatory. I mean, it should, but it's very easy when they get on there. It walks you right through the process.
Don't you have to put your name and address in there when you're making the, right?
No.
Oh, you don't? Oh, that's a different request.
We, that's, yeah, there's some different requests.
I'm sorry, there's different requests.
But this one, they don't have to. But I would, I would suggest, so we can get back, put your phone number so we can call you back and tell you we are taking.
That's what I mean. We should have instructions to say, this is the specific information we need for a trash complaint.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Justin. If you follow right down the line, if you go on and look at it, you follow it, just do a test one, you'll see.
I've done a couple.
So it answers the questions, so it should work.
And the other item that I'm happy about using this system is that it also provides us with a report. So we can keep track of these items and that's something that I'd like to do, where an email system would be a little harder. So I'd really like to try to utilize this system. I do know that, I had worked with the staff this week and we have had people using it for this issue already. So we just need to promote it more, I believe, on the website. That was something I wanted to also do. But I wanted to meet with Republic in the upcoming week and really put a better plan together and then go to our website, inform the public as to what they need to do and give this a try, put Plan A into place. And thank you, John.
So I have one comment. I actually live in the first ward and I don't really get any complaints about garbage and I don't really have any complaints, so. But I do have complaints. I have seen the glass on the streets and I was wondering if there was something you could do where you could provide instructions to residents because I've seen where the garbage cans have been blocked by cars. So that makes it hard for collection. I've seen where residents don't bundle their garbage correctly, which makes that hard for collection. And I've seen where garbage cans have been fallen over and the residents don't pick them up. And I don't think we have an expectation that your services should be picking up garbage that has been left behind. So if there's something we can put out or you can put out to the residents telling them how they could do garbage better?
Sure. So I had previously spoken with Micah Heights and he, we were talking about the whole garbage situation and the program and trying to make more of a space online for the residents to go there and get more information. And I told him, you know, if you guys need it, I can go on and grab it from our online and give you information, either pamphlets, stuff like that, that you could digitally put up there and have the information for the residents.
And I think that would help tremendously.
Mr. Parker? To Helen's point, sometimes I think also when they're recycling nights, I think people think our, the service and the garbage people are mind readers because they don't, people don't separate what they're doing or looks at another and then they get upset because you said you put my recycling to the regular garbage and it's like, but it wasn't marked. So there's definitely lessons to be learned, the public, as far as how and when to put it out. And then to Justin's point, I wish the two times I called it was only 15 or 20 minutes because it was like 45 one time and 40. The second time, I just hung up. People can't wait that long for somebody to answer the phone.
Yeah, absolutely. And you understand from my perspective, it gets frustrating because that is an arm of my company and it's frustrating the residents who in turn are directly pointing their arrows directly to me, which I can't do anything for Arizona or for Virginia.
I have one last comment. I did make it the last meeting. I made the comment, I believe, that in the contract, it also states that you, your company could be fined if you don't pick up the trash. I made that comment. Some people didn't like it, some people did like it. I don't know how to test that or even how to track that. I mean, if we, if we told you that there were 25 places didn't get picked up for a day, what do we do? Do we prorate it by all the, you know? So it's not, I don't think that's an easy fix.
Right.
But I do think that we should stand firm on, let's get the job done or something else has to be done.
Yeah, 100%. And look, you guys are a priority. Throughout all this, throughout the pandemic, throughout everything, we've made you guys a priority. Our team has put their best foot forward and, you know, the beginning of last year when we saw tonnages go up almost, we were picking up close to 50 tons per day year-over, not just here, but throughout our service area. And they were cleaning everything up. So we try and work with you. Anything that we can do to resolve any issues, we'll do. And typically, if there is an issue that we, if we missed a street or what have you, try and have that solved and done within 24 hours.
And tonnage went up last year because everybody was home? It's, I think you, someone commented on that?
Yeah.
So all the, the extra refuse, yeah?
Yeah, tonnage is still up.
Okay.
I wasn't finished before, so I still have a couple more things.
Oh, I'm sorry, Justin.
That's all right. For the most part, I haven't had any issues up until last week and my issue is only minor. Whoever came to my garbage can opened the lid up and pulled out the bag and left all the stuff in the bottom. It was, I believe it was an older truck. Maybe it didn't have a manual arm and they didn't feel like lifting my big can. To me, if that's my biggest complaint, it's a good day. But we got a couple of emails. We got an email a few months ago detailing some of the things in your contract, such as your trucks that are out of spec and out of date for our contract. Do you have any, I know that, you know, anybody ordering a trucker or a vehicle now is, you know, extended weight. Do you have any update on when you expect newer vehicles in your fleet?
Yeah, absolutely. I believe we have two more that we have to get. What we've gotten from the manufacturer, which is MAC, you know, they're just back, just like any other car manufacturer or anybody else. So we're expecting late December arrival. It could get pushed back further than that, I'm not sure. But I do know that we are approaching the one-year leeway time that we had for that.
Okay, and my second comment is, when our bill list comes up, I intend not to vote to pay Republic. It's not to not pay you for the services. I think we need to hold on to services because like you said, your right arm, your customer service department, isn't doing a good job and you don't have control over that. And I think the only way a little borough like us is gonna, you know, have any impact on saying something is if we hit Republic in the pocket and start holding back some money so that they, you know, somebody a little higher up looks at it and says, you know what? You know, these people owe us money. You know, these people owe us money, they got a good point, let's, let's not spend it on attorneys, let's fix our problem and make every, every other customer happy.
Sure, sure. To counter that, I would just say, I would hope that the plan that we have in place for customer service is going to work out fine and that our team that we have in place is going to cause little issues to have to go that route.
I hope so, but I've been up here for three and a half years now and I've, I've heard this before and it gets better for a few weeks, maybe a month or two, and it went downhill again. So I hope this time, I hope third time's a charm.
Is there no one else?
Thank you, sir. Thanks for facing the fire.
Not a problem, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. You have three minutes. At the one minute left mark, I'll just give you an indication of one minute to go. First one up is Molly Rafferty. Your name and address and then your time will start after that.
Molly Rafferty, 123 Delaware Avenue. Here to talk about EcoRemedy. EcoRemedy is identified as a gasification system. They take biomass, which is the sludge after the sewer plant's treatment, and extract the syn gas, which in this case is methane. They use the captured methane gas on site to generate the heat that burns the remainder of the biomass at approximately 2,000 degrees. The captured methane is what generates the heat that creates combustion. Gasification to capture methane as a fuel source creates no emission, but because they use the captured gas to burn the balance of the biomass, this is not a closed gasification system. It involves incineration. If it were closed, there wouldn't be odor or uncontrolled emissions plaguing our community. The odor and emissions are due to the combustion aspect, the incineration process. They could capture the methane gas and take it off-site to be further processed and sold as an alternative fuel source, but they don't. The purpose of this EcoRemedy facility is simply to reduce the biomass weight, which saves the MMA dumping costs. Morrisville, especially the MMA, needs to put into consideration the emissions' significant threat on public health and the environment. The DEP allowed them exemption of air quality testing due to their R and D, their research and development status, as a developing technology. EcoRemedy's been scrambling for 20 months to address their odor issue and visible emissions.
One minute.
Still, they're unsuccessful. And in regards to the emission toxicity, I cannot stand here and say that EcoRemedy's emissions are busting out hundreds or thousands of toxins. And at the same time, you and MMA cannot stand here and say their levels are within a safe range because the bottom line is, their emissions are not tested. Morrisville's very own code, Chapter 465-15, letter C refers to emissions that can cause damage to human health, animals, vegetation, et cetera, and letter E refers to odors being offensive at any point on or beyond lot lines. Recent violation of Pennsylvania code noted by the, by the DEP. It's 121.7, environmental health and safety refers to failure of preventing emission of air pollution.
Three minutes, ma'am.
Can I continue?
How much longer do you have?
Minute tops.
I'm going to allow it, but not pass that one minute more.
Thank you. Also here, I have this sighting, which is a site location. It shows that it's inadequate due to the proximity to housing. An actual detailed stack test, that's what incinerators have to have annually. That shows VOCs, the semi VOCs in metals. I also have a risk analysis, a gasification highlighting environmental risks. And due to their lack of compliance with Morrisville Borough's very own code, I urge council to act immediately to shut down the facility that's been out of compliance for 20 months. 465-15, letters C and E. Here is a picture of EcoRemedy. This is what happens at the bottom of the hill that nobody sees because it's hidden. And I have a petition, many residents and people who work in the area that are affected. If I could turn that in now or later?
Turn it in now. Your time is up though, thank you. Paul Chapman?
Chad McDorff, Pennsylvania Avenue 332. I got a little bit of complaint about that. The contract we have for our code enforcer, I can put in complaints about grass weeds up to your knees, up to your waist. They say they're going to do something, they had complaints about certain addresses, they haven't done a damn thing. You know, there's, there's fleas, there's ticks, there's lice. We also got three, three blocks of this town that's already had the mange, been dead. If you try to kill them, they say it's against the law to shoot them, shoot them. If you don't kill them, then they get in somebody's yard, you've got a pet dog, you get the mange, he's dead. There's no cure for the mange. About time this code enforcer gets the hell out. Go down, down these alleys and check the, the sides of the grass and the weeds, just sit just right up down the avenue. Okay, thank you. Back I'm holding all you guys anyway and your parents.
Thank you, sir. Next person up is Tina Shen.
She left.
She left, okay. Amy Rankovich? Okay. Jane Berger?
Sorry about that. Let's see tonight. Jane Berger, 90 West Staple Avenue. Welcome to our borough manager. I understand you come with a wealth of experience and we're very fortunate to have that. As any job, there are challenges. I certainly hope some of the challenges can become positive opportunities. Briefly, the concert in memory of Mr. Mitchell. I was here this weekend and I hope that becomes a new tradition for small venues to be held on the borough ground lawn. I'll get the right word out there. That's new tradition, we hope that continues. Now I'll move to past traditions, which is the Labor Day picnic, which for decades upon decades, we know, was sponsored and coordinated by the mayor. Last year was pandemic and this year we always kind of MIA. Thank council for, at a previous meeting, for authorizing something, but it seems to have been a little, little nebulous. When I saw something on a candidate's Facebook, I went to the borough right away and I didn't see anything about, you know, the event or what was happening. Some folks didn't know about it. So that certainly was a glitch. We all wear many hats in this borough and I hope that we all pull together for Labor Day. I did speak to, to Mr. Parker and we had a, a good conversation about making sure we don't lose the Labor Day tradition and that everything will be done hopefully. And I'm sure you'll see that it is fed by all the past policies and the way things were, were carried out. And that we have a, a good time as had by all. I'll quickly put on my MBA hat and I'm sad to share tonight that because we did not get a timely approval, we haven't even heard from PennDOT about closing East Bridge Street, we sadly have had to cancel the card show. To put an event on of this size, it takes time in terms of gathering those sponsorships and getting the trophies and everything put together and printed and we tried to go even beyond a drop dead date. What's unconscionable is that PennDOT didn't have the courtesy to say nay, yay, maybe so, it could be COVID. We do know that. It had to go to Harrisburg and not be done at District 6. So that's why with the borough support and help, we really got it in much earlier than they, they told us we needed to. EIT, I hope you'll have an informal discussion, questions and answer with the residents. There's, there's a lot to discuss on further, but thanks for starting the discussion. Paving, the difference between Lafayette and Plaza. Plaza Boulevard Street is entirely owned by the borough, where Lafayette, as you heard tonight, is a 50/50 situation. Several years ago, as a council, one of the pavings of Plaza Boulevard was able to be funded by CDBG. And the last time you did it, this area you were doing, unfortunately, they would not, they would not approve that. And the last time Lafayette was done, we did a paving and they did a reconstruction. I'm just disappointed that Falls Township didn't let you know early in the process that, that they were going to do this, but it's more complicated because it is a half of a street and we do have residents that live on, on the other half. So again, I'm a process person, the process was not the best. I understand your concerns, but if it's done, then maybe it'll be done and you won't have to do it for another 20 years. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker? Three minutes. I'm sorry to hear about the cancellation.
Yeah, we, we are really disappointed.
But that does answer my question, I was going to ask, where were we with the letter? Because I didn't see anything, so, to PennDOT's letter.
Everything was sent electronically through the borough. I mean, the Burton's been a great partner the last two years because last year we got canceled because of COVID and it gets submitted to the district, PennDOT District 6, which is their southeast region. The regional guy looked it over, didn't see any problems with it, but because of COVID, they had to send everything out to Harrisburg and they didn't have the decency to, to get back because the contact would have been to the borough. And with the staff handling, I know if it came in, we would have known right away and hopefully we could have gone forward. Next year, we're going to try it again in the spring and with the borough's support, we're going to do a Plan B of an alternative on a non-state street. Thank you.
Next up is Mary Herenda.
I'm Mary Herenda and I live at 343 Crown Street.
Mary, you'll have to talk into the microphone a little bit closer, please.
Yeah, I'm Mary Herenda and I live at 343 Crown Street. Okay. Under Pennsylvania's Constitution and its Donated or Dedicated Property Act, no government entity can sell or convert to non-public use any park that has been donated or dedicated for public use. Government is not free to sell or use the land however it wishes as if it owned it outright. And the government's role is to care for it and to preserve it for the benefit of the public. Parks provide many benefits for both residents and the community. And Pennsylvania law recognizes that and preserves them for the public to enjoy. People often choose a place to live because of a nearby park. Williamson Park provides an enjoyable place for healthful activities such as running, walking, playing outdoors, participating in sports, or just relaxing under a tree or on a bench by the river. It provides a place for picnics, family gatherings, festivals, and concerts for the community to enjoy together. We're truly fortunate to have, to have a park right along the river, right here in Morrisville, like Williamson Park. According to the Donate or Dedicated Property Act, Williamson Park must stay a park unless it is no longer practicable or possible and has ceased to serve the public interest. Clearly, that is not the case with Williamson Park. The borough government must preserve Williamson Park for the people. The Donated or Dedicated Property Act prohibits the development of Williamson Park. Thank you.
Next up is Don Rice.
I begin with a quote.
Excuse me, sir, name and address for the record, please.
Donald Rice, 343 Crown Street, Morrisville.
Okay.
I begin with a quote from the November 16th, 2020 council meeting made by John Van Louvene, Select Morrisville's lawyer. He said, quote, "We need to have council expand the borough redevelopment district." Later, "We also need to talk to council about having properties that are owned by the borough transferred for purposes of incorporation into this project, into the redevelopment authority." Next, I quote Motion 9J, passed by the, at the December 21st, 2020 council meeting. It reads in part, quote, "Motion to authorize borough staff and professionals to engage with Select Morrisville and the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority to aid Morrisville Select's completion and submission of a full subdivision and land development plan application," end quote. Finally, Van Louvene at the November 16th, 2020 meeting states, "Theoretically, I cannot make application for a land development plan approval unless I have an ownership interest or in this case, it will probably ultimately be the RDA making the application." These quotes make it clear, the RDA in Select Morrisville's Williamson Park plan is to one, get council to expand its redevelopment district. Two, the RDA then takes ownership of the borough's and church's park properties. Three, the application prepared by Select Morrisville can then be submitted to the borough council and planning commission by the RDA. The borough needs only to pass a motion to expand the redevelopment area to allow the RDA to take ownership of the park. This is an attempt to bypass the Donated or Dedicated Property Act. It will not succeed. This act states that the municipal parks cannot be developed. Development is not okay if the RDA first takes ownership of the park. Development is not okay when the park is leased or when it is donated or when it is sold. Municipal parks, Williamson Park, cannot be developed, period. Therefore, Save Williamson Park requests council make and pass a resolution withdrawing support for Select Morrisville's land development application because development of Williamson Park is prohibited by the Donated or Dedicated Property Act and furthermore directs the RDA to refocus its efforts in Morrisville to the existing redevelopment area. There was never a public discussion of this act. Select Morrisville's negligence has caused this situation. Please correct it with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next person up, I apologize, cannot make out your, your name.
Deborah Friedman.
Yes, sorry.
No problem. My sincere apologies for the chicken scratch that is by.
Mine is no better, so.
I'm hoping that the.
Name and address just for the record.
I apologize. Deborah Friedman, 751 Gordon Drive, Morrisville. I'm hoping the council will respectfully help me with what I wish to say as I ask you a question, if you don't mind responding. If you would kindly raise your hand if you own a car, I would appreciate it. And if you would not, then I respect that too. Okay. I own a car, but I have a question. Did you say Gordon cabinet? Gordon.
Gordon?
Yes.
That's, yeah, just so you know, that is not the borough of Morrisville. Were you aware of that?
I know that I have a Morrisville address.
Yes.
Right, but.
So am I allowed to speak or am I not allowed to speak?
Well, I don't know that I'd leave that up to the president. I'm not sure what your issue is, but just so you know, you're in the wrong.
You can speak, but there's, you are on the Falls Town, you're in what they call the Morrisville section of Falls Township. It's, it's an incorporated area, but it's not part of.
I apologize, I spent a great deal of time in this area, so I consider myself and my family a part of the community. So my question about whether you have a car has to do with this. If you own a car, it is yours, you own it. I cannot sell it, just as the borough does not own Morrisville's Williamson Park because in 1938, Williamson donated $10,000 bequeathed for land for a public park, as well as the rest of the park is leased for 99 years for $1 per year from three churches in Trenton. So it's not owned, so we can't sell it, any more than y'all can sell my Honda outside. I ask that you preserve the park. I'm sorry, I didn't speak as well as the two previous speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person is Courtney Liu.
Hello, Courtney Liu, 327 Hellside Avenue. And respectfully, I just wanted to say, I think you have some information incorrect. We all know Jane Berger is, has sort of the, I'm sorry to bring her up, but she knows all of the legal, okay, I'm sorry, but I don't think you have your information correct as far as the Williamson Park parcels, so, but. No, I don't believe so, really. I'm, I'm saying that truthfully, so you might want to investigate that just a little bit more. Okay. So I just wanted to thank, or I wanted to welcome also Ms. Danko and tell you that Morrisville is a truly lovely place. It's a wonderful place and I also wanted to thank you for helping with the library booth. That's a wonderful way to begin here in Morrisville. I wanted to thank Ted Parker for hosting the event to remember Scott Mitchell. This past Saturday, I, I really adored Scott, he was very helpful to me. And so I wanted to thank you for having that event to remember him. I want to say Lisa Michelle was great and thank you for honoring his memory. And I wanted to, I wanted to encourage more musical events in town and say that I would also be happy to advertise them. I don't, I don't know where, there was a little bit, maybe not as much advertising. Well, there was, but it didn't get out to all the residents. And I also wanted to encourage that maybe the residents could share the flyer as well because it was just a terrific musical event. It would be nice to see all the residents come out and enjoy it. So that's all I wanted to say, so thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next person up is Joshua Kuntz. State your name and address and then you have three minutes.
Gladly. My name is Joshua Kuntz, I live at 40 Union Street, right over there. And might not be as specific as I would like to be with something, so I hope you can accept my inspirited speech. But I wanted to start off with kind of a, an interesting spiritualism of such that I came across within the last decade that helped me kind of with my own life and I always thought was really meaningful, which was that when we face hard times, that the difficulty for some people is that they turn their eyes away, but others will stay fixated on the thing that is the toughness and become jaded. And so we have this kind of choice between turning away from our issues or getting thick skin and that the virtue is to do neither, but to stay vulnerable and look at the problems before us. And so with that, by the fact that you're here, I do want to thank all of you because you guys are all kind of doing that regardless of any sort of service. And as a person who works in the service industry, I know it's a great burden to have to deal with other people's emotions. It's one of the hardest things we as primates have to do evolutionarily because most of our structures and successes come on the backs of our ability to work with one another's emotions. So I say all this kind of to contextualize what I'm sure some of you may have heard or been aware of, the IPCC climate report that has come out recently. And it like, if you aren't, but the gist of it is basically that we as humanity can potentially prevent the worst of our impending global environmental cataclysm that is being brought about due to the effects of industrialization in, in the West and elsewhere after that point, if we work together and pretty immediately. And so I'm sure that this borough right here will take the charge and will save the environment, like us, just like us, right? That's in our powers. Now, but I do think that that is a context that we should keep in our hearts and our minds when we are reviewing the things that we're trying to accomplish today, whether it be the methane releases, which is a horrible burden upon the atmosphere with I think a higher percentage than how carbon affects the atmosphere, or even when we're getting rid of our lands potentially.
One minute, sir.
I'm sorry?
One minute.
Oh, thank you, yes. So yeah, that was kind of the most of it and I know that these are, are really tough times for all of us. And so I do want to just like really reemphasize that I appreciate the work that you guys are doing, even if I were to find myself disagreeing with your. Even if I were to find myself disagreeing with your stances on many things, humanity has always been a difficult struggle of us coming together and working together, and that hopefully we can kind of keep that in our focus, that we are here to try to make improvements and stuff, and I really appreciate what you're doing. And that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, no one else is on the list, so we're going to close out public comment, and we're going to move on to approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, before we move on to that, I see Mr. Warren is here in the audience. Can I ask him a question regarding one of the public comments we received?
If you'd like, sir.
You can ask, I'm all I can answer.
In relation to the EcoRemedy, I believe a conversation you and I might have had, I don't know, many months ago, ended with, they were kind of on their way out and weren't being renewed. Is that still the case?
No, I think that's an oversimplification. I indicated that we were having some problems with them. We're aware of it, and I explained to you that there is a provision in the pilot program agreement that we have, which would allow us to terminate that, that program. Something I spoke to Ms. Rafferty and Mr. Di Stefano about is that there is a public program that we've scheduled in cooperation with EcoRemedy. We're not actually going to host it. The idea is that EcoRemedy address the complaints they've been receiving. That meeting, that public meeting would be on September 2nd, Thursday, September 2nd. Yes, I'm aware there's a scheduling conflict, an apparent scheduling conflict with the EDC, but the EDC doesn't really have an agenda for that night, and I've spoken with them about them using another part of the building if, if they meet. So there will be a public, public meeting at which people can address all the things and more that Ms. Rafferty and the residents have, have raised.
Okay, where's, have you advertised this public meeting? Because this is the first I'm hearing of it.
No, I understand that. The fact is, as late as today, I was still making arrangements to make sure that there was no conflict with the EDC. We're prob, we will, we will provide, for starters, let's make it clear that it's not an MMA meeting. It's, we're, we're going to facilitate a meeting that EcoRemedy, we believe, needs to have, allowing the public to address them directly regarding the complaints about their operation, their process. The, the meeting will be advertised on Swift Reach. We, we have a, a program that allows announcements to be broadcast to cell phones, email addresses, and landlines. What happens is voicemails are left if nobody answers, and I think it provides text messages. I'm not sure. I, I don't know where the checkbooks are, so I'm not sure how Swift Reach works either, but, but we will provide that announcement. The nice part about using Swift Reach is we can do a targeted group of people. We want to focus particularly on the neighbors around the EcoRemedy site. We also will be announcing, providing direct information to anybody who signed the petition that, that Molly provided, and will also be reaching out to anyone who telephoned in a complaint in the last two years, 18 months. We, we have a, a log of all telephoned in complaints that, that we keep as well.
Okay, so there's no active public plan for them to be leaving the premises anytime soon?
Sort of loaded question, the-
I say public because I understand that you are probably a landlord to them and have an agreement, so there may be things that you can't say in public because of executive privilege.
The short answer, yeah, the short answer to your question is yes, there is no active plan.
Okay.
There are a lot of plans, but yeah, nothing I can share with you.
Would the MMA, maybe an oversight for, for you, maybe it would be the board, maybe, could the MMA have some sort of meeting with Borough Council, whether it be the board members or the executive staff to discuss this and remedies that have already been tried, or what you may be trying?
Yeah, we could do it before or after the public meeting. It might be more useful to do it after the public meeting, because that may or may, I don't, I don't know what, you know, what the outcome of that will be in terms of, of specific scientific or engineering information, but sure, yeah.
Okay.
And I know that the DEP had, had made them stop operations. Are they up and operating again?
The DEP did not make them stop operations. The DEP, in response to some complaints, had issued a, an NOV, a notice of violation, requiring them to come up with a corrective action plan. That's, that's the, that's the official and legal response that was provided that I'm aware of.
I, I got, they sent me a letter, so I'll have to go back and read that to see-
Yeah, I have a copy of the letter. It was basically requiring a corrective action plan, which, and I could not tell you what the status of that is at this point.
So are they still working in full, or are they still trying to figure out their issues and they're not working?
Well, why don't we ask them that question September 2nd? The truth is, I don't, I don't, I don't monitor them on a day-to-day basis. I don't know if they ran today or not, for example. I couldn't tell you.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
Would that meeting be held here?
Yes.
All right, would you, for those of the residents that don't know about Swift Reach and how to sign up for that?
There's a signup page on our website.
On the MMA website?
MMAwatersewer.org, I believe. And we've, actually, we've, we've been using Swift Reach for about six or seven years now, and we've gotten pretty good, pretty good compliance and signup participation, but anybody who, and some folks don't want to share email addresses or, or cellphone numbers, and I get that. But if, if they do want to be able to receive Swift Reach notifications, they should go to our website, MMAwatersewer.org, and follow the prompts and, and provide the information to sign on with Swift Reach.
Thank you.
Then they, then they will get anything that we send out that way.
We could also put, put it on the calendar for the, on the borough website as well.
What time?
We will, I want to, I want, I wanted to be able to confirm before we did that, that we didn't have a conflict. And as I said, I did that actually just four or five hours ago.
What time would that meeting be?
Tentatively, it's scheduled for 7 o'clock. That could change, but, but that's what I, I was trying to do it as early as possible in the evening after work hours.
Zoom, too, down?
Say?
Zoom, also?
Yes. We don't actually have a, a dedicated Zoom program ourselves, but the borough's been nice enough to indicate that they would allow us to piggyback on theirs, and we actually discussed that this afternoon as well. I talked to our IT guy, and that'll be implemented, yes. So you will be able to get on Zoom.
Mr. Parker, one more, one more question. It's actually about Swift Reach, just letting the folks know that it's, it's not just, I mean, this is very helpful, but it's also when you, when you, what do you call, with the hydrants?
Oh, yeah, we do, we do flushing announcements.
Flushing, yes, thank you. So there's, there are a number of things that you can notify the public about, so it's really been very helpful.
There are. One of the reasons we went to Swift Reach, which is a commercially available program, there is a county emergency program that I know, I don't know if the borough uses it, probably does. A lot of municipal corporations, municipal entities use a county-wide emergency program, but Swift Reach is a little bit more flexible. It allows us to put things like this, to get things like this out to the community. The, the emergency programs are a little bit more limited in what you're allowed to and how, how you're allowed to use them.
And one last thing, I just going to talk-
You said that already.
I know, I did. I want to talk about later, and that's the murals, but figure since you're here, I'll just make mention that if you want to-
I did respond to your text message.
You did, yes.
There's, there's a, there's a water hydrant right at the corner of Morrow and South Delmore, and we'll set it up so that that can be used. It's actually a new, it's actually new, it was, well, newer, it was, it was placed there six or seven years ago when we put a new water main in Morrow Street.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to 6A, approval of the minutes for the Borough Council regular meeting of June 21st, 2021.
Mr. Parker, can we indulge and do them in block, please, for all three, unless people have some issues with regards to each of them individually?
Anyone have any objection to that?
No.
Okay, so we're going to, do you have any problem with that?
I'm-
No.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 21st, 2021, July 13th, 2021, the special meeting, and the regular meeting of July 19th, 2021.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions? All right, we're going to move on to finance.
Mr. President, I didn't hear Scott on that. Is he still on the line?
Scott, are you still here?
Still here, yes.
Are you, are you a yes?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to move on to the Treasurers Report. Everybody had a copy of that. 7B, a call for a motion to approve the bill list.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. President, my only comment is I'm going to say yes, but it's for everything but republic services.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'd like to remove republic from it as well.
Okay.
That's individually?
Yes.
You're voting against it?
I just, yeah, just, yeah.
But it'll stay on the bill list, then?
How do you want to handle it?
The best way to handle that is if you want to remove someone, I would make it a motion, vote on the motion, and then finalize your vote after that motion, if you were to remove them. So I believe I can say that.
Okay.
Mr. Bowers made a motion that was seconded by Mr. Yeager. I think is fair what to say.
So that was a motion that you're making to remove it from the bill list?
Remove it from the bill list. So we have a motion and a second, discussion?
Now, add to that, like I said before, my intention is to not, completely not pay them, but to hold on to payment to entice them to fix stuff.
Agree.
What is the motion?
To not pay republic out of this.
To not pay them?
Remove their bill from this-
To extract it from the list, right? To not pay them this month and owe it to them, or to not pay them?
It would be to remove the, the motion as it is, is to remove them from the current bill list, so you would not approve the bill tonight. Obviously, it can be approved at a future meeting to pay them at a different time.
All right, Virginia, you still there?
Yes, I am.
All right, we're going to do a roll call to remove republic's bill from the bill list.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Laho? Mr. Nickel, oh, sorry, excuse me. Mr. Paul?
No.
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
No.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
I'm going to say yes. Motion passes. Republic's bill is removed from the bill list. All right, so we're going to move back to 7B, which is a call for a motion to approve the bill list minus republic's bill. So moved.
The motion, the motion was already made. You just have to, any comment? Yeah.
Okay.
Just any comment?
Any comment, then?
Excuse me, the motion is-
This is to pay all the other bills with the exception of-
Right, but who made that motion? So you're-
You did. You, you made a motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You're seconded, and then it was more, the best way to put it is that was amended.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, discussion? All right, hearing none. Virginia, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Laho?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes, motion passes.
Mr. Parker, question. What happens with the republic bill? Do we revisit it next month? Do we never pay it? What, what happens?
We're contractually obligated to pay them. We're just withholding payment at this time.
Well, for how long are we withholding payment?
It's next month, I guess.
It's next month. We'll, we'll revisit it next month.
Are there any penalties in our agreement with republic for not timely, not making timely payment? Do we know?
Off the top of my head, I cannot say. I don't have the contract in front of me.
I'll look it up.
Most likely there are, but just like there's penalties for them not doing collection if they're not going to follow, that's my opinion is why should we stick strictly to it?
All right, any other, anybody else want to add anything to that? In other words, we're going to move on to reports. All right, 8A, mayor's report. Mayor's not here, and I don't have a copy of her report, so we're going to move on to 8B, police chief's report.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, chief.
I want to be as quick as possible. Overall crime rate so far this year, we're still down 37%. We are making progress with our three problem properties, the club, the club house lounge, the open lounge, and the flyers den. The increase in part-time hours has worked very well this past summer, being able to keep two guys on the street all the time. This is a question, I think, for the attorney, if you would. I know this ordinance is passing tonight. Is there any way to put some kind of penalty in the end, as in say, you know, that they get cease operations where if they violate this? Because we, we're doing something right now that just doesn't seem that they continue to operate under, you know, please, please play nice, and it doesn't seem to go anywhere. Is there any way we can-
Sure, sure, there is a, this is just an amendment to the ordinance. There is an overall penalty to the ordinance. Unfortunately, the penalties that we're limited to and allowed to under the MPC is fines. However, under the MPC, we can also take civil action if they are violating it. So while there isn't penalty specifically in the ordinance amendment you're holding, there are penalties tied into those sections, yes.
Yeah, but there's nothing that we can back into as a borough to freeze those penalties and do a cease operations order when they do?
Not, not without court, not without court intervention, no.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
May I ask a question, chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, I had two. One was the, I saw that there was special enforcement equipment. Is that anything that you can share? Enforcement equipment, it's like $13,000. Anything new or different, or?
$13,000?
I think that's what it says.
No.
For the year.
I haven't seen the bill list.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll move on for a second. Would you like to talk about the mural participation of your officers? I haven't talked about the mural yet, but-
Well, I want to not let you do that.
Okay, but your, your, your officers are participating?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I, I have a question?
Go ahead, Ellen.
I have a question. So we have some trucks that are going through town, and they're making left-hand turns or right-hand turns where it says no trucks. And I know officers can't be everywhere, but if a resident saw it and took a picture of the license plate or a video of them making the turn, is there something you could do? Like, could you send a letter, or is that code, or?
We can issue a citation based on that, but the person who takes the video will have to come to court.
Okay.
That's it.
Chief, the bill list, I saw a couple items related to the COPS grant. Can you give us an update on that? And has there been any change? I know, off the top of my head, we were originally looking to either have funds donated for time or switch funds around and not spend funds so that the borough wouldn't have any matching funds to pay.
Which COPS grant are you speaking of, sir?
There was three items. I think one of them says Holy Trinity on it.
You're talking about the school grant?
Yes.
Yeah, that is, we're in the process of clearing the bills out, the money. As the bills come in, they get sent to the federal government, the federal government sends us the check, we send it to school.
Did we ever get an agreement with, I think, Holy Trinity? I believe we got one with Morrisville School District, correct?
Of course, I know we have, everything is worth going the way it's supposed to, so I'm sure we have everything. All the bills have been paid, the grant's working great, they're getting the equipment for free, and there hasn't been any issues.
Okay. My next thing was, I know you said that things have been calming down with the lounge and the hookah bar. I know two.
I didn't say they were calming down. I said we're making progress.
Okay, I, I assumed that to mean calming down, so I'll take back my wording.
No, but we're doing, we're doing things that I can't speak of.
Okay, I was just going to point out, I know two weekends ago that parking lot was full again, and there was ATVs and dirt bikes there. But last weekend, last Saturday night, I drove by after I heard a couple ATVs drive down the street past my house. I got there, there was five cars and five ATVs, so they either decided not to have a big event that night.
The one that you're speaking of, the owner said he was having a baby shower.
In the location?
Yeah.
At 2:00 AM. Okay.
Yeah, this guy is.
Yeah.
We are making progress, we are doing things that I can't speak of, and we're hoping things will get better.
But I think, did I see that there was a third officer on duty that night as well?
There's more than that.
From other departments, as I saw Falls and Lower Mayfield driving around as well.
Can I please not discuss this any further? In public?
I, I get your, yes, I'll, I'll stop there. But I just want to say thank you. I appreciate seeing that.
We're trying, we're trying. And if you want. If you want to speak to me privately about it, I will tell you some things.
I think, Mr. Robinson? Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
I have a question. Yes, Chief, the, that, the hookah lounge up there on Plaza, they got that, they got a letter with the cease and desist order. Is there anything with that? Like, are they ceasing and desisting, or? Because I realize if stuff goes on in the parking lot, then it's, you know, it's not really his responsibility, but is he, is he adhering to that or not? Do you know?
Yeah, Mr. Robinson, that was more related to, my understanding, the cease and desist letter was related, there was doing some specific construction. It wasn't related to his operations. There were other notices, two other notice of violation letters that did go out related to his operations, though.
Okay, I have one more question.
But that's what I spoke about, about having this ordinance that we have actually has some teeth in it, that when we do a cease operations order, that it ceases operation. But he's doing a whole zoning thing that is probably will be coming through for a zoning board in the near future.
Okay. Chief, what happened to the, to the, the white van that we used to have? The motor carrier enforcement van that Bo Luna used to drive? I haven't seen that in the parking lot for several months. Did, like?
I announced that months, I announced that months ago, I went to, that was donated to the water department, or to John Leder's street crew, so we can do water repairs.
Okay, I was, I was unaware of that.
Okay. That's it? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to 8C, the Managers' Report.
The majority of items that I had to speak about were on the agenda this evening. You also have the Managers' Monthly Report regarding Keystone Municipal Services. I don't know if there are any questions, and I'm hopeful that I might be able to answer them. I, too, have been working with the chief and also code and zoning regarding some of these issues. And we are making some progress, some progress that we can't really talk about this evening. But I do appreciate Council working towards adopting the ordinance that's on the agenda this evening, because that, that will be helpful also. So I don't know if anyone has any questions regarding the Keystone Municipal Services information that was provided.
Mr. Parker, I just have, I have a question on the code enforcement report. This month, it said that there were 117 resale inspections, and that wasn't the rental, because rental is broken out. So is, so there really were 117 homes? That was, or businesses, or? I mean, the number seems a little high. So I was just curious if, I mean, I don't think you might have the answer today. I'm not looking for it, but in viewing it, I thought that seems awfully high. I mean, that would be great, but I don't think we sold that many homes in town. Could be wrong.
And you're correct, I don't have that answer, but I could look into it for you.
Okay, thanks. And then, the last, also, the 29 North Lafayette, I know we're working on that, but I'm just wondering, what, what can we do? Anything?
I can tell you that I did meet with code and zoning, and we're also putting together a plan on a lot of these items to try to fast-track things and move things forward in any other way that we possibly can. So I think it's premature for me to say anything this evening, but I just need to tell everyone that the chief is working diligently. Code and zoning are also on some of the items specifically that we do have on these lists. So hopefully, within the next month or so, because it does take time, we will see some positive action towards these properties.
Was Prospect on this? I have to look again. Prospect is on it, yes. So I assume we were waiting for, they're trying to track down the owner who they sent something to them in Philadelphia, and no response yet, so I just, I mean, eventually, I think we're going to have to involve legal. I hate to go that way. Sorry, Flagler and Scott and so forth, but whenever we don't or can't, or don't have to spend money that way, I prefer a different route.
You know, that's what we're here for, any way we can help to, we'll help. Ms. Danko, code enforcement, as well as streamlining of that, even if we're involved minimally, we'll do our best to, you know, get it done, get it done quickly.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. President, I just have one quick comment.
Sure.
Judith, welcome. Not that everything on that list isn't important, but I'd just like to point out what's number one on there. It's been on there a long time, it's going to be on there a long time, so please don't forget about the Stockholm building.
Right.
And following up and keeping the county under toes.
Thank you for the, for the welcome, and I believe every single item on this page, these pages are very important. And I know Stockholm is on the top of the list, and I've had several conversations regarding it. We do have someone that's actually interested in the building. So who knows where this could lead at this point?
We're also in a meeting, I just, just dialing back in. I know we're at the end of the meeting, but.
We're not even close to the end of the meeting. All right, we're going to, we're going to take a.
Well, we need Virginia.
Yes.
We're going to take a quick recess, because.
Okay.
I need to use the facility.
If there's, if there's a property not on the list, just tell you, and then you'll look into it to see what it is.
You are in the meeting now.
All right, and I'll ask to unmute.
Are they taking a break? It looks like they might be taking a break.
Maybe a break, or it's finished, I'm not sure.
You're even making a run for it.
It could be that, because you let them know.
We're not finished.
Yeah, I, I requested the unmute. I think it just takes like 20 or 30 seconds, and then it pops it back in, so we should be good to go here ASAP.
Oh, John Leder's calling me right now, hold on.
There it is.
It looks like we're reconnected.
Yeah, I can hear the room.
And the host, they used to. Yes, hopeless, because we're on the. Yeah.
That'd be all of them for me.
I know he's doing. Yeah.
I did, I had a nice big dinner. Fish tacos with mahi-mahi was amazing. I think we're back up, just so you know. Okay. Okay, I didn't see that.
Terry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. We've been reconnected for a few minutes. I wasn't sure if you guys were taking a break or had a.
Yes, we did. We, we took a quick recess, so, so you're good, right? We're all good?
Yeah, we lost a few minutes of Judith's manager report, but it'll be available on the live-size playback, which I will also upload to YouTube after the meeting, so nothing should be missing from the public record.
Okay. All right, so we're back. Manager Report, you were finished, right?
Yes, I'm finished, thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to 8D, which is Committee Reports. Committee Report? Go ahead.
It's the Joint School Board.
It's a joint school board meeting that was held on August 4th. The president, Damon Miller, was asking about zoning, the zoning process, because they do have a prospective buyer for Manor Park. That is public knowledge now. It's a nursing school. Although it's zoned for school, it's not zoned for this particular kind of school, so they're going to be coming, asking for a variance. But school board had to extend their due diligence. I know that they were, I, I don't, I don't have the answer as to whether that was given to them yet, but that was just a couple weeks ago. School's going to start on September 1st. They, they are not requiring masks. Bob had asked about the changes made to accommodate COVID. Damon explained some of those. The safety grant update, September 30th is the deadline. The extension for the grant was a question mark. And regarding Pensbury, they will be talking with them, they'll be talking with them about possibly a feasibility study, which, of course, this is an old subject. Talked about feasibility study, but they cost money, and it's going to have to be paid for, so hopefully, if they do agree to it, it would end up being a shared expense. And then the ZIP code situation, we really didn't talk much about that, unless Bob can elaborate, I don't recall, didn't write a lot of notes regarding Zip, the ZIP code, the letter we had received. There's some trepidation with it. I don't know that anybody's moving forward with regards to that right now. And that was, that is all.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't believe there were any others, so. We're going to move on to action items. 9A is a call for a motion to approve recognizing September 2021 as ovarian cancer awareness month, along with support of hanging ribbons on trees around Morrisville Borough and the Turn the Town's Teal Awareness Campaign.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
With that motion and second, I'm going to read the Mayor's Proclamation.
Oh, okay. And it also, I didn't know who was reading it. Okay.
Able to get a copy. "In recognition of September as ovarian cancer awareness month and in support of Turn the Town's Teal Awareness Campaign. Whereas according to the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition, an estimated 1 in 78 women will develop ovarian cancer in her lifetime, and knowing the signs and symptoms is crucial in early detection. And whereas while ovarian cancer is the deadliest of all gynecological cancers, there is no early detection test and diagnosis is challenging due to the common and subtle, subtle symptoms. Making awareness and education extremely important tools for saving women's lives and." And whereas Turn the Town's Teal is a national campaign that takes place during ovarian cancer awareness month in September to promote awareness of this terrible disease. And whereas Morrisville Borough will participate in Turn the Town's Teal campaign by placing teal ribbons on downtown trees and structures throughout Morrisville Borough community. And Morrisville Borough encourages businesses and residents to participate and showcase teal ribbons. And now therefore be proclaimed that on this 16th day of August 2021, the Borough of Morrisville declares September 2021 as ovarian cancer awareness month and supports Turn the Town's Teal Awareness and Research Campaign, signed by our mayor. So we have a motion. I've read the proclamation. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I have one comment. I think in conjunction to this, if it passes, we should ask the Borough Manager to reach out to the Bridge Commission and see if they can, uh, do the paperwork to request that the Trenton Makes Light Show on the bridge be turned teal, either for a day or for the month of September, if possible.
That would be cool.
Thank you, Justin. I've made that verbally. I don't know if that got to the right people, but yes, thank you. But we should still send it through more officially, I suppose. Also, I'd like to just say thank you for, um, you know, my fellow colleagues here who are hopefully in support of this. And I'd like to invite the public to, uh, pick up a ribbon down at the Borough Hall that they can hang on their own personal property. And, um, we did lose, I think, since last year, I think there are 10 trees that are missing this year, but still be hanging up about 100 bows. So thank you to the community for their support. And again, hopefully, um, people will get involved. In fact, there'll be a TLT table at the Labor Day picnic. So if anybody's interested, we have, we'll have the handouts there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Hearing nothing else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes 7-0. 9B, a call for a motion to approve. Call for a motion to approve special event road closure for a portion of the 200 block of Stockham Avenue, 205 through 227, for Holy Trinity School's 5th Annual Food Truck Frenzy to be held from 4:30 to 9:30 PM on Friday, September 10th, subject to applicant providing certificate of insurance to Morrisville Borough. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Just, uh, it's, I know the Holy Trinity's putting this on, but it's open to the entire community, and, uh, they usually have some good food trucks.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes 7-0. 9C, a call for a motion to approve project amendment request. Sorry. Form regarding the CDBG budget increase and contract extension for the library roof, roof project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Scott, you're still there?
Still here.
Okay. 9D, a call for a motion to award the contract for the library roof project to EDA Contractors, Inc., subject to an expiration of 30, of a 30-day review period under the responsible contractor's ordinance in the base bid amount of $226,162.20, along with possible deduct number one in the amount of, in the amount of $6,300, and deduct number two in the amount of $4,560, to be sub, uh, subject to the availability of grant funding. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Just happy this is happening, and thank you to all the administration who worked to, uh, get those extra monies. And to the original people who gave us the money, which were our state representative.
Anyone else? And we're going to do a roll call on this. Virginia, you still with us?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure. Yes.
Ms. Lajo?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. 9E, a call for a motion to approve entering into a one-year agreement with Haug Associates to collect and submit the 2021 recycling performance grant data for $4,500.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Extentions? Motion passes 7-0. Uh, 9F, a call for a motion to approve the zoning ordinance amendment concerning the regulation for hookah bar slash lounge and nightclub uses. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes, um, if Scott would, would please explain provision number five. I know that I had a question about the word "not", and then you did explain it, I think, but.
Yeah, no, I, I.
It was a little convoluted.
I, I. Yeah, so you're going from the saying that there's these illegal, you're, some part of the provisions is a severability provision. So some part of it's being declared illegal, unconstitutional, unlawful, something beyond your power. We do switch it over there, because the reason, what, what we're saying here is, the reason the word "not" doesn't appear after is hereby declared to be the intent of this council that this ordinance would have been passed. It, we do not say would not have been passed. We want to say that this provision, anything that is found to be unlawful in this ordinance, if, even if that provision didn't exist, we want the ordinance, the ordinance would have been passed anyway. So the "not" actually comes at the end. So what we're saying here is, it is hereby declared to be the intent of Morris, the council of the Borough of Morrisville, that the ordinance would have been passed, would, or, excuse me, would have been adopted if such illegal, invalid, or unconstitutional section, clause, sentence, part, provision of, had not been included therein.
Okay, so the "not" is at the end.
Right. We're saying it, I get it. I, I understand the confusion. We're flipping the, we're talking about the provisions, then we're flipping the council, and I understand where the confusion can come in. But the idea here is, with the severability provision, we want to say, well, if this, we wouldn't, we, we don't, we want to talk in the affirmative, that council would have always passed this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Extentions? Motion passes 7-0. 9G, a call for a motion to approve a Civil Service Commission resolution approving an eligibility, oh, God, one second. Eligibility list for the position of entry-level police officer with the Morrisville Police Department and certifying three names on the list for council's future consideration. Can I have a motion? So moved. Would you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Um, the, the wording on the motion, it says entry-level police officer, but shouldn't that say full-time police officer?
I think that's the. Yeah, the, the.
Civil service.
That's what the civil service certified the list as, is entry level. Um, I mean, we can bring the chief up, but to me, it's largely the same thing. The idea is they're, they're, they're certified for that position. They're not certified for a higher rank, is what they're saying, with the entry level. So just the first full-time level.
I know, I looked at this, uh, I looked at the, um,
...officers anyway, so it couldn't.
Correct.
Yes.
Have all these, have all the background checks been done already?
No, under the civil service law, they have to certify the list prior to background checks being completed.
But you can certify the list without the vote for the other three, right? Like the second part, certifying the three names. I mean, you can approve the eligibility list, yeah, that's a tongue twister, without certifying three names if they haven't been checked yet.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, and yes, they were doing two steps in one, so there wasn't an active eligibility list, so they put that together. Council was looking for a vacant position. Obviously, before the next step, these background checks will need to be done. If there's any issues in the background checks, council still has the power to object to the list, are people on there, and send it back for three new names if needed.
Well, I'm not, I don't like the idea that we're certifying the names that we don't even have their background checks, but.
But if you said that he can, we reserve the right to not accept the people later after the background checks are done, so what's the problem?
The motion also says, in certifying three names on the list, or a few, council's future consideration.
Yeah, council's not certifying the list, we're just acknowledging the receipt, and like that, the civil service commission is who creates the eligibility list and certifies the candidates. You're just acknowledging your receipt, you have it, you're ready, prepared, once additional information comes in.
I have a question, I'm not sure if anyone here can answer, possibly the chief, but I'm not sure. And maybe I'm wrong, but when I looked at the list, I didn't see any of our part-time officers being eligible for full-time employment, or none of them that we currently have eligible?
They're on the list.
Oh, okay, then I just don't know the names, that's fine then, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes seven zero. Nine H, call for a motion to install a plaque on the Red Canal Bridge in memory of David Nay.
So moved.
I'll second it. Discussion?
Did they, I know there were some questions of what they were putting up, is it just, is it really a plaque, or is it a statue? No, it would be a plaque. It's not been in water yet, because the person, I think, has been on vacation, I understand, but it will actually, it will be on the bridge itself. But if and when this gets approved, which I'm hoping it will, I have the information with regards, I had given it, I think via email, to Micah last month, that we do have to send a letter to Devin, the park ranger, let me make sure I have this right, Devin Buzzard, the Delaware Park manager slash ranger, and ask for permission to install the plaque, then he will issue a letter of approval. The DCNR already approved the installation, but he's going to give us permission, written permission.
Why is that happening? Because when we went to rebuild the bridge, they said it wasn't their bridge, it was our bridge, so why do they have a say on that when they wouldn't pay for it?
You're right, it is our bridge.
So that, like, we can put the plaque up and it's nothing on them?
That's, but unfortunately, that's not the way they're working this, so, I mean, I guess we could find out more details.
Let's ask for permission, if they deny permission, then we can decide what action we'll take, how's that?
Yeah, I mean, DCNR already approved it.
I say if they, I say if they deny it, we put the plaque up anyway. If they wouldn't give us a dime for that bridge, and David Nay had to go, they borrow on steel at Home Depot and everywhere to get wood to rebuild this bridge, and they didn't want to build the bridge, I, this is ludicrous that we have to ask them permission to put a sign on the bridge that they didn't want to have nothing to do with. That's crazy.
I agree, but right now, it's just either approve or not the motion that's at hand, which is to install the plaque, and that would be the first step on our part, so. Anybody else has anything else to add? Go ahead now. All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Tension, motion passes seven zero. Nine I, paving project, Falls Township, contingent upon execution of solicitor's agreement. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, yeah, what's meant by the solicitor's agreement is obviously, we'll have to, like we said, this project was starting soon, we will have to come to an agreement with Falls Township, obviously, it'll be agreement in the terms that council, should they agree to move forward, agree, or decide to move forward, I should say, not agree to move forward, this is entirely your decision, we'll have an agreement in place with regards to the costs and the services. It's largely been made out by the township engineer who was here, what will be done and how it will work, so it would just be memorialization of those terms.
So we're actually approving the process of trying to go forward to get all the information, because we don't have it all yet, is that what you mean?
No, you would approve moving forward with the paving.
Okay.
So moved.
Did anybody move it?
No.
I'm not happy at this point.
Yes, Mike did.
What?
I said, yes, Mike just did.
All right, I'll second it, so, all right, so any further discussion?
I'd like to make a amendment to it that it's up to $15,000.
Not to exceed 15?
Yeah.
All right, you okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay with that, so.
That's reasonable.
Not to exceed 15,000?
I have, I have two questions. I realize that paving a road, it costs a lot more than just the cost of the asphalt, getting the equipment there is, is, you know, that's a portion of the expense. How much does it cost to, to like, I see, I don't know how to phrase this, if the, if the, in other words, Falls Township, the equipment's already going to be there, so basically, we're just paying for the asphalt for them to finish the borough portion of that street. Mike, like, what I'm wondering is, how much would it cost to pave that road if we had to pay to bring the equipment out to do it? And it was safe, up to $15,000, how much road could we pave, another road in our borough? Because, I mean, I haven't been on that portion of North Lafayette in a while, but I can't imagine that that road is in any worse condition than some of the other streets in the borough. I mean, we've got some really dead roads, and like, would that $15,000 go, you know, would it go as far on another street? If that makes sense.
Scott, this is Justin, for a frame of reference, I believe, we paved the back parking lot here at Borough Hall for, I think, $18,000.
Okay.
Was it quite that much, or it was in that ballpark?
Somewhere between 15 and 18, I believe.
I think, I think the engineer had said that an estimate on us doing it ourselves would be 18 to $25,000, so, and I think the estimated range on this was 13 to 15, so there's.
So you're looking at five to 7,000 for equipment then?
Yes, in saving and having it done this way.
Just upfront, I think everyone knows how I feel about this, so shouldn't be a surprise.
I just wanted to confirm, we do have money to pay for this, it's not going to break our bank and.
We have money in liquid fuels to pay for this, and.
Plus PICO.
And also PICO. Correct.
Would the PICO money be used for anything else?
Because the PICO agreement does not dictate what it needs, what the money needs to be spent on, we could utilize the PICO money for other things if we really wanted to, or should I say needed to? I mean, I would prefer to utilize it for paving, because there are a lot of paving areas that need to be accomplished. I did drive around with Mr. Later, and I actually did drive down this road, so that, I did feel that it would be advantageous for us to do the other side, I think it would be to our advantage to save some money. But the PICO agreement does not dictate where we must spend the money, so we also have money in liquid fuels to do it, and we are not, we are not not doing the projects that we still have on our paving list, and the money is still in liquid fuels also, so.
Where would this street fall? Because there's a lot of streets, like even in the First Ward, there's a lot of streets that need to be paved that I think are probably worse than North Lafayette, so if we didn't do it, where would this fall in terms of our schedule? Like, is it three years from now, five years from now? Two years from now?
I don't know, because I don't have a list of the current plan. Wade, are you able to help with it?
It's not currently on there, I think.
We're doing Hillcrest and Keystone right now, is that what's on this year's plan?
Hillcrest, Keystone, and we were doing a portion of Lafayette, but it's proportioned right next to Hillcrest, it's not the whole way up over.
Right.
But I believe that the next doors we have, this list are Washington Street, Robertson Avenue, Market Street, Queens Alley, I believe those would be up next.
Thank you.
Given that I've probably driven this quite a bit, because I usually go to work and from markets, middle 50%, maybe 75% down the list, it's not high, but it's the convenience of having somebody there and not having to pay for it, and economies of scale of having the contractor out there and only having to do half a road.
100%.
Justin, in your estimation, if we don't, if we don't do it now, when do you feel that it would need to be done? Do you think it would, it would last another 10 years, or it would need to be done in a few years?
I didn't look at it that great a depth, I mean, you can probably get 10 years out of it, but, you know, who knows, you know, Public Works could be out there ripping up the road for water lines next, next month, or three years from now.
And then we charge the MMA?
It's really, there's not, there's not a borough street that doesn't need paving, it's just which one do you do?
Would we be able to have the MMA look at that and make sure that, because?
I don't think in the timeframe, Scott.
No, okay.
Because they're out there, the milling machine is sitting on top of the street, they're doing sidewalks now, in the next week or two, they're going to, they're going to mill and pave.
And if I may.
Okay.
People do care about this. I got a call and a text from Bill Burgess, he lives on that road, he saw this going on, the residents on that road are going, why wouldn't we just take advantage of the opportunity that we have? I literally got a follow-up text from him today, asking if the borough was moving forward. I said, well, you gotta wait until the meeting, we'll find out, but, so residents that live on that road are saying, hey, listen, you got an opportunity here.
And I'll have to ask for Burgess's forgiveness, because I do know them, I do know the, I know the family.
And I'm not sure if Mr. Later has any information that he could apply to this situation that could be more informative. I know that I had also questioned the lines underneath, and, you know, the timing and so forth of, you know, of any notification, so, Mr. Later, I don't know if you could help out?
I can't speak for the MMA, but I believe the remains there are newer, I don't believe they're the older remains, like we have some other areas. I'm telling you, for me, when I look at this street, if you paved half of the street, they, like they do, that other half is going to break up fast.
Yes, yes. 100%.
That's why, it could be two years and that road could be a complete mess.
That's why we should put pressure on Falls, which I'm going to start tomorrow.
We can do that, and absolutely, that's up to you guys, but I just know that they're going to be started doing the work soon, and we really, I mean, they are, it is a borough, it is a borough street, and it does need to be done, and it's, like I said, if they pave it, I guarantee within, I guarantee, within a couple of years, you'll have to be, you'll be having, we over there will be one of our worst, we'll be one of our bad streets again, so I think it'd be who's us, that's my opinion, but the rest of the council, it's up to you, how you want to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Judy, you said you drove on it?
Yes, I did, yes.
And in your opinion, would you want to vote, would you want to, would you recommend paving it?
Again, it's not the worst road in the borough, although the situation at hand is why I brought it to council's attention, just as what was just said, if we pay, if half of it's paved and the other half isn't, we're looking at problems much earlier than we would have been, you know, the entire road needs to be paved, driving on it, so I am in support of it because we do have the money, and also, it would be saving us money, so I'm all for saving money, when someone else has already paid for the cost of putting it out to bid, and engineering, and all of those other items, so that's the only reason. And I also would like to mention that I think it is a good idea to take into consideration as to what Nancy's thoughts are, and moving forward, I will definitely, if this ever arises again, but I didn't have the time for this one, to reach out to that township or whatever, and do what needs to be done.
Now, John, John had mentioned that, and I'm sorry, Scott, in a couple of years, yes, it will probably look even, you know, look worse than the day they do half the road, but I would also think that that would give them even more pause about not doing the other side, because their side gets ruined.
They're not going to do it, and we don't, you know, and the project is going to start before our next meeting, and we either, we either vote for it or against it, but.
All right, I'm sorry, we don't want to hold the vote up anymore. Go ahead.
Justin, do you, when you, when you, now, you go to, do you work in the new building up in, up in Laura Makefield?
Yes.
So when you go to work, you, that's, that's, I mean, I don't want to call it a shortcut, but it's kind of a shortcut versus going down Trenton Avenue and making the left. Are there a lot of other, are there a lot of other people that use that road? Like, the way that you do going out, and the reason that I'm, the reason I'm asking is.
I couldn't say, I'm on it for three minutes a day.
I use it a couple times a week.
Because, because I'm thinking it would be more of an aesthetic thing, because I know from driving, like, in different states and whatnot, the states like the nicer roads are when you enter a state, like, if you drive through Pennsylvania, and you come into Pennsylvania, the road's really nice. When you get out to Ohio, the road stinks, because they, they don't, they don't, they, I guess they want to make the road look good when you come in. So what I'm saying is that there are people that are coming in into Marsville and using that as their way into Marsville. If they come down a nice road, and then all of a sudden halfway down, they're going to know, oh, now I'm in Marsville, when the, when the road's falling apart, so if we pave the whole thing, I mean, it could be, you know, make the borough as a whole look better. When people come in, they'll be like, wow, this is, you know, I'm coming into Marsville now, and the road's really nice, so.
Yeah, Scott, picking up on that, don't you think it would look better if we have the whole street paved, rather than they say, oh, this side of the street is Falls Township, it's nice, the other side is Marsville, it sucks, I mean, appearances don't mean everything, but I think it counts for something in that.
Right.
Just remember, we're doing, we're doing this, this portion of roadway at a discount, because we're joining in.
Exactly. Right.
All right.
I mean, it's a catch 22, if people are going to say, you know, you guys aren't paving roads, you need to fix the roads, and we do this, somebody's going to complain, well, why don't you do my road, you did this one, but, we're going to get it at a discount, and it's going to need to be done, and, I mean, I think, I hope John knows enough about roads, John Later said that in a couple of years, then we should just do it, so.
I agree, I agree with you, blame John.
We'll pave it, we'll never know.
All right, anybody else? Otherwise, we're going to put this through a vote, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Nay.
Motion passes, Scott? Are you a nay or a yea?
You were serious voting yes.
Did?
Yeah, I'll be yes.
Okay, all right, six one. All right, nine K. Nine J, oh, I moved, no, I'm pissed, nine J, a motion to adopt police directive 225, towing and wrecking.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. This has been going on since November.
Tow weight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes seven zero. Nine K, Marsville Environmental Advisory Council appointment, one appointment to fill the open position with an, with an unexpired term of seven months, term expires on January 22nd, 2022. Can I have a motion?
I would like to.
We're nominating, sorry.
I'd like to nominate Joshua Kuntz to that position, he has submitted a letter and is interested.
We have one nomination, do we have another? We have one nomination, do we have another? One last time, we have a nomination, do we have another? All right, hearing none, nominations are closed. We have one nomination for the position, Joshua Kuntz, we're going to vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes seven zero, congratulations.
Congrats.
All right, we're finished with action items, we're going to move on to 10 other business, 10A, the Labor Day picnic. All right, as we know, there was no Labor Day picnic last year, and there potentially wasn't going to be a Labor Day picnic this year. We have the ability to have one, some initial work has been done, unless council tells me not to do it, I will proceed with doing it. We're going to have a committee meeting and involve members of the public, we're going to need help pulling this off, so I just need some direction.
Do it.
Yeah, you're looking for a motion?
You don't need a motion.
I don't think you do, we already, we approved it.
Yes.
Do it, take the lead.
We approved it last May.
Okay, thank you. All right, the other.
Do you want to tell the public any of the things that are happening there? We only have a couple of weeks to get that.
Yeah, it's very preliminary, but, where the heck is my notes? Sorry. We're going to have some, some music that will play most of the day, we'll have two bands, we're hoping to have a bouncy, bouncy house like we've had in the past, but our manager informed me today that our insurance company may not allow us, so, and we, and if we're not able to, we will have something else for the children as well, we're expecting to have a petting zoo with pony rides, so.
So if.
And then games and events, and some food vendors.
If the, if the bouncy house vendor has insurance, they still won't let it?
I have to find that out, yes.
Oh, oh, okay.
Right, would that be?
Because I thought they had insurance.
Yes, normally, we would ask for a certificate of insurance with the vendor placing our name on the certificate, although there was some comment from the insurance company regarding bouncy houses, so we're looking into it further. If the insurance company feels that it's an allowable item, we'll follow through, if not, then it would be replaced.
We hope there's no wind that day, because that's really the, that's the biggest problem they have, is they take off. And I think there's, isn't there talk of a car show, too?
Yes, there potentially would be a, not, not, the car, the car show that's normally there, because they hadn't heard anything from the mayor, booked with Falls Township, but we may have a small European car club that will, will be there, that they're totally independent, they're, they'll be advertised through us, but they're running their own, their own show.
And they're vintage.
And a vintage.
Vintage import and.
British, British imports, and I think other, other European cars. There will be games for the kids, and we're hopefully going to have a committee meeting for parks and open space in the next two weeks to try to finalize this and get some community support and help us with pulling this off. All right, and it got really quiet in here.
Well, the air went off.
Yeah. 10B, yeah, 10B, the library Halloween party. I know nothing about that, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it's on there, I mean, we're having one, as we do every year, but hugely, it's not something we approve, because they do it in-house.
An email was sent to me by the library, asking if they could have a Halloween party, I believe it was in the parking lot.
Oh, or the park, maybe.
I'm not sure, but what happened was, last minute, it got withdrew, because they decided that they didn't think they could do it in the month that they wanted to, so, so it.
So you'd have a Halloween party and not, not in October? Okay.
At this time, I'm waiting for a response from, from the library, so I, it was too late to take it off the agenda, although.
Okay, fine.
Although my concern was, if, if this is something that does happen all the time, can, can it just be approved, or must?
Yeah, normally, we don't even approve it, do we? I don't think, we, yeah, it's just done internally.
It's just done internally?
All of their events need to do internally.
Oh, wonderful, then.
They do all kinds of stuff.
Then we'll take care of it internally, thank you.
I think that's just an FYI for you, because Scott was involved in the board meetings and things, so they probably just sent it to you the way they would have sent it to Scott. But since we're on the library subject, I would like to mention, oh, that's right, so sorry, go ahead.
All right, so we're done with other business, we're going to move into borough officials, and I will be able to.
You're going first? Oh, okay. There, so the library is doing a 9/11 memorial book, they're calling it, they're asking people to, they have a paper that's specific to 9/11, and they're asking you to, to write somewhat of a little diary about the day, if it's a day that you, you know, maybe it was a good day for you, maybe it was a bad day for you, if you have any thoughts, and they're putting this book together, and it will be on display in the library for the month of September, and then, of course, it'll be there in perpetuity, so that's one thing going on there. Also, we have, the library board is doing a raffle of a painting by a renowned artist in Newtown, he painted it for free, which is great, and now we're selling raffles, so I'm hoping everybody on council will at least buy one. I know that we had our first sales at the concert on Saturday, so it's going well. So you can also purchase a print of what he painted, so, and it is on display, I think it's been, it's been delivered back to the library today, so you can go down at any time and actually take care of both those things. Let's see, regarding the sidewalk in Pennsylvania Avenue, Scott may be able to, to speak to this as well, we did get a letter stating that they hope it should be done shortly, and they talked about if there was any architectural damage or anything of historic value, that would be a problem. I did receive an email from Eileen Bailey, and that's, that's her, now, this is, this is not official, this is just her comment, this is what the work that she does, and she said she didn't see it as being any major issues regarding architecturally or historically. So that's the sidewalk that everybody, the famous sidewalk that Mr. Minder, I hope, doesn't walk on it, so.
Is this a sidewalk over the bridge, over the canal?
Yes, over the canal on Pennsylvania Avenue.
There's a hole between.
Yeah.
There's a hole between, there's a hole in the, in the street, like, between the curb.
Yes.
Like, when you walk on that side, you can see the canal through the street.
Right.
I wouldn't walk over there.
No, which is why the cones are there, and hopefully, they get it done sooner than later. Again, that could be a little bit of pressure to, to Pendot.
Are they fixing the street as well, the sidewalk?
Yeah, they're fixing the underside of the bridge, and they're just redoing the whole bridge, and of course, the sidewalk would be part of it, but, yeah.
And just, just an FYI, Pendot just had called me and left a message regarding the replacement of the bridge.
Great.
So either at a September, October meeting, we'll have them on the agenda for a presentation.
Okay. Let's see, I guess, I haven't heard any update about the JC building, it's just, it's always something I'm curious about, and this, this question was for Scott, if he knows, there was a right-of-way agreement with the Caracappa attorney, what, do you know?
Yeah, we have that, we'll have it ready for council next month.
Oh, okay, and then there was, I think that's it, although I'm going to announce, August 28th, First Time Around Band will be down at the stage between eight, 6:00 and 8:00 PM, so hopefully, we'll have a great turnout this time. And that is it, thank you.
Anyone else?
I would like to add that the, the first, that First Time Around Band, the drummer in the band is Joey Pamucci, grew up in Marsall, went to, he was a couple of years behind me in high school, his brother Don graduated, so Joey's a lifelong Marsall guy, and he's a phenomenal drummer, he's actually a music teacher down in South Jersey, but he's a really, really good drummer, and he's a really, really good guy, so, so that's enough of a reason to come out and support one of our own.
That's a great PB, it's a great public service announcement, thanks, Scott.
Two things real quick, Friends of Marsall Dog Park will be hosting a pool party at the dog park, I unfortunately couldn't find the date and time, but Friends of Marsall Dog Park have a Facebook group, you can join, get the latest info. And secondly, just.
Is that a new one?
We had one last month.
You had one, right?
We have one.
You have another one, okay.
We have a meeting tomorrow, I'm sure I'll have all the dates straightened out. And secondly, I had sent an email to Micah, when he was acting borough manager with Ted, I'm in the process of getting the bridge commission to come in and give a presentation, hopefully next month or in November, about the demolition of their building and the rebuilding of it, so that they can tell what impacts it'll have to, you know, the local residents around them.
Do you know if the, if the borough's been contacted already? Because I was told that they've already set up a date.
Yeah.
That was, Jody, I think, told me that?
Yeah, I reached out to him in, or July, and asked him to take, early July, I think it was, right after they awarded the contract, and asked for them to come in in July or August, and they got back to me in late July and said, it's probably going to be September when we sit down with the contractor and have. when we sit down with the contractor and have a better schedule, so that we can tell you.
And for the public's knowledge, the, the building on Wood Street is being demolished. So.
And rebuilt.
Yeah, and rebuilt. Smaller, much, much smaller.
Which one is that?
Grove, Grove and Wood Street.
The toll base, the toll building.
Toll bridge, the Bridge Commission building.
Yeah, the four-story building is getting rebuilt.
Yeah. Are we able to provide my contact information?
Yes, I will in my next follow-up.
I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So, I saw on Facebook that, that someone was painting a mural on, on the Bridge Commission wall?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I.
So, I'm assuming they got all the permissions that they needed from the Bridge Commission, and the borough has nothing to do with it?
The, the, let me take that back. Thank you for bringing it up. It's a proposed mural project, but it's more than proposed now. It's actually going to happen, and the deadline is September 17th. It's called Love is the Answer, and this is actually a national program, and it's being run through our district attorney's office, who has partnered with all the police departments. They're trying to build communication with the police department and communities. So, number of communities are having a mural. And in searching for a place in Marsville to do, the, all the other larger buildings that have a, you know, like, good landscape for it, they're all private properties, and they weren't really approached. But the Bridge Commission was approached. Mr. Resta came down with some of the other folks late July and gave permission, along with the commissioners. So, August 23rd, 24th and 25th is when the, the wall will be prepped. So, it has to be stripped first and then prepped for the new painting. There's a muralist from Yardley, who they, who the Peace Center has also been a part of this. That muralist is designing it, and the community will paint it. So, it's not just being painted by professional painters, it's actually going to be painted by community members that want to join in and paint with the police department, some of them. Even if they don't do some of the painting, they're going to be there as part of a communication project. Thank you for reminding me. And that's it. It's called Love is the Answer, and love is actually an acronym, but I don't remember what it stands for. I apologize. But you could Google it, and it'll tell you.
Anyone else?
One last thing for budget. I see we got something from Verizon for the quarter. We only got $16,000. We budgeted 90. If it stays on that, we're about $20,000 plus short for the year. So, we've talked about this before, but I know budget's coming up soon. Could be scary.
Motion to close?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Mike and Helen.
Second.
Right. Well, I, that's why I hate being, I actually forewarned Ted, but. Oh, good. Well, you know.